Please stand for a moment of silence followed by a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Review of the agenda? Questions?
Will we go make any changes at all to this one?
If, the only thing that I would suggest to add is to go into closed session to talk about personnel issues that, or litigation.
So if someone would need a motion to amend the agenda to add that.
What would be the verbiage for that?
Under KRS 61810, which is the Open Meetings Act, discussions of hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee, member, or student without restricting that employee's, members, or student's right to a public hearing if requested, and then under subsection C, discussion of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the public agency.
To put it as...
Close session per...
But number thirty?
Yeah, KRS 61... Dot eight ten.
Okay, so anyone want to make a motion?
You have to have two to add it, is that how it goes?
I have to have three.
Three to add? Okay, my brain just failed me.
Turn this a little longer.
I mean, I'm cool with, I'm one.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to add a closed session as number thirty per KRS 61 dot eight one zero.
And read the subsection, the two subsections.
Okay, discussions of hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee, member, or student without restricting that employee's member, employee's members, or student's right to a public hearing if requested, and personnel matters, and discussion of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the public agency. So, who made a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Any other? Comments? Everybody good? Anybody want to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All those in favor? Motion carries, five to zero. Okay, we're gonna approval of the minutes, and we'll start with February twenty-second. Anybody have any questions on those? Do you have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
You can't vote, can you?
I was there.
I thought we weren't there.
You were when the February, there was three of us.
We still can't approve.
We still can't approve this because Brenda was the only one, Brenda was here.
Okay, well, we're gonna, do I have a motion to table the approval of the February?
Yeah, we need to table that.
To table the approval of the February minutes to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, oh, Ashley second.
You can have it, whatever.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, the regular meeting, the March the twenty-second meeting, do you have any thoughts on those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, I'll second, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Bob Stain, because I wasn't there in March.
Three, the April nineteenth work session meeting. Any questions on those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve. Did you have questions?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Student, staff, and recognition.
Hello, everybody. Hey, we're gonna first recognize our transportation department, and this is for... Hold on, I moved this thing around, but recognize for three years of continued unemployment and three years of no fall accidents, which is a huge accomplishment. William Hunt. So I'll read the names. You, I'm sorry, Mr. Parker, thank you.
That's all right.
Congratulations. Thank you, we're gonna get a picture.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, yeah. Come on up here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Geneva Payton. Yeah, we're gonna have the last name correct. Okay, great, thank you. You're welcome. And you get one more thing, should add another name. And now you get a picture. Walter Mathis. We're on the court. Donald McNabb. Tracy Neely. Bronson Noe. Congratulations, and thank you. Thank you. James Nolan. Okay, and Kenneth Autorne. Teresa Phelps, all in. Thank you, congratulations. Okay, thank you, Mr. Parker. We appreciate you and your support.
Do it again, next one.
Same time?
Yes.
Our next group. Okay, our next group is for Shear Elementary Cafeteria in Campbell High. Shear Elementary Cafeteria and Campbell Junior High Cafeteria have completed an administrative review by KDE. The review period started August twenty-twenty-one and ended March twenty-twenty-two. Both of these food service programs received high marks with minimal finding by managers, assistant managers, cafeteria staff, and work extremely hard to ensure that the students receive nutritious meals, meet all of the guidelines each day. There's a lot of variety, too, we have really, really delicious lunch menus. So we would like to recognize the managers, assistant managers, for their exemplary leadership, and the staff for their hard work and dedication to our school nutrition program for quite a ton of schools. So Shear Elementary is Mr. Starling Larry. Cafeteria. You're gonna have to read that. Donna Finn. Thank you. And at Campbell Junior High, we have Ms. Jeanie Davis. Okay, and what about Ms. Cindy Reed? Awesome, Cindy, thank you. I should shake your hand first, there we go. Thank you. And now, we have a real exciting set of recognitions from migrant education and the technology department. We want to recognize the Board of Education and for twenty-five schools for the following staff who are becoming Google certified. So I'm gonna go ahead and ask, Dr. Lindsay Hill is probably at the end, but you need to come up here so that we can take your picture with all of these subjects. They are earning their Level One credentials after successfully completing seven hours of training, then passing a Google Certified Educator exam, completing both the Google Certified Educator course, has many benefits, including teacher confidence, using Google programs and apps, helping students better utilize technology tools available to them, and improved collaboration assistance and digital citizenship skills. Congratulations to all of the staff that have been here. So Ms. Gloria Concrey. Gloria here? Okay, Andy Rector from GRC. Candace Craig from Baker. Amy Hanchew from Rose Station. Candace Jones from Justice. Carrie Elliott. Okay, Carrie, you gotta come up. Congratulations, thank you. Catherine Griffith from GRC. Stacy Moore from Baker. Tolee Sadler, or Sadler, sorry, from Concrey, and Haley Branum from Campbell, and then of course, we have a certificate for you too, Dr. Lindsay. You gotta get a picture. Thank you. Okay, and Ms. Bush, do you have her? I'll go grab the ball. Okay. We have winner for preschool and elementary. Right, ninety-two point. We didn't have that one. Right here. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you, intermediate high school winner.
I'm trying to get that ball, I can't get it.
We're trying to, don't go away.
I'll cheer for you, Warren, appreciate it.
You're so close. You go for it. Thank you. And the overall winner. I just saw after, burned the wall. It's Rose Station, that's it. Thank you all. That was good. Stumbled one name today, I mean, I did stumble one, one name today.
Okay, next, it's a public comment, and we have one person down for a public comment, Ms. Gloria Staten? Okay, it's time for a public comment, you've signed in for a public comment, now, okay, now's your time to address the board. If you would like, you can step at our podium, it's got a microphone and...
Okay, my question is to the board.
I will, I'll stop you, public comment is just that, public comment. If, if you have questions that you would like an answer to, you can feel free to email the board as a whole, and Dr. McComas, or Dr. McComas and the board chair, whatever that looks like to you, and we will answer your question, but the public comment section of this meeting is not the time to do that, so we're just here to listen to your concerns.
Well, how can I address my concerns when I can't speak?
Well, I'm not, I've just, you said my question is, and I just, I didn't want you to get signed up when you didn't get a response.
I can do that?
Yeah.
My concern is about the dress code at the high school, and the code of conduct at the high school, and those are my two main concerns. And then my concern is also with that, it makes me wonder, or I was able to see why there are people wanting to go and take their kids to charter schools and not have them at public schools, from what I saw in one day at the school, and all of you as a board should be able to know exactly what I'm talking about in the dress that our students are wearing. So that's really all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, on the student support services, number four, consider action of setting a work session date to discuss the Clark County New Early Childhood Center Preschool Construction Project BG two-one dash two-four-seven and restrooms at the GRC tennis court, Dr. McComas.
You all are gonna be hearing about several things with our preschool construction project, and we want to be able to move through those, and I know there's gonna be lots of questions, and I welcome questions, I thought it might be more appropriate, and after speaking with our architects and our construction managers, and Mr. Stump, we thought it would be good to have a much longer time set aside, so if we could look at mid-May, so everything else will allow us just to stay on track with timelines, but then at mid, at the work session, we can have a more involved, not that you can't have one tonight, but we can have a more involved conversation around everything you're gonna see tonight, and other things that we might need to take into consideration around the cost of the project. So, if you wanna take a few seconds or a few minutes to look at your calendars, and we can set a May work session, I think that would be beneficial.
I should have done this in the very beginning, but we, can we modify item four, because it seems like it's a little redundant or contradictory, there's a contradiction, number four and number eight, because we're going to consider action and discuss sub-construction of new restroom facility at the tennis courts on item eight, and we have tennis courts over here on item four, if we just, if there's a motion, if we can just strike that last part on the motion. Where am I looking at, looking at that incorrectly?
I get where you're, I get where you're coming from. What if we let Mr. Stump present the bid, and what that entails tonight, and get, because really, I mean, we've not had much discussion on that, and add that into the work session, because I, I think the cost is pretty high, and just to see if, make sure there's any other options or stuff like that.
Yeah, and the purpose of doing that is, again, knowing that we can have that conversation, so if you don't feel comfortable with what you're gonna hear tonight, then we can revisit that at the work session, or you talked about the tennis court bathrooms? Yeah, he's got some information, I don't think it's necessarily redundant, if we don't need to discuss it at the work session, then we won't need to discuss it, but Mr. Stump has some information to present to you tonight that you may or may not want to take action on, for the tennis courts.
If it's on there, on the work session, and we don't talk about it, it's no big deal, but it's harder to get it, to talk about it when it's not on the agenda for the work session, right?
Okay, you're just setting that bottom eight up to be approved, so we can talk about that at the work session.
No, I just...
But that's fine.
No, I don't, I've, I've looked at it, but I'm, and I know that the bid is a lot, but everything's a lot right now, and I've just, I've not really heard anything about the tennis courts, I've really not even talked to Dr. McComas about it, that's just from, I looked at it about an hour ago, and from what I saw, I just thought that might, it might be a good idea to have it in a work session. But if you, I mean, whatever the majority wants.
Can we just move number four behind number eight on the work session? Because May is already a huge, I mean, a busy month, anyway, with everything going on in the schools, I mean, I know, I'm in and out of schools. I mean, is it gonna be like absolutely necessary to have a work session in May, you think?
I feel like the, having the work session, the sooner the better, so that we make sure that we stay on timelines or other adjustments that we might need to make, so I would hate to, and I understand, I appreciate that, being able to consolidate our time, but I think you all would probably appreciate having a more, a longer opportunity to talk about it, instead of tacking it onto a regular meeting.
Well, no, I don't think it needs to be on a regular meeting, I just didn't know if it was something that needed to be addressed in May, is it something that's, I mean, you're...
Are we, are we pushing against the deadline?
Where's Donald at? I think we need to have, we, yeah, we need to have this in May.
Okay.
Okay, so, when's our graduation?
Twenty-seventh.
How do you know that?
Seems like you're looking forward to that, Warren.
Just a little.
Any other dates in May?
Can we do it the first of May then? Because towards the end of May, it gets crazy.
What, would the tenth be the inappropriate date, that's like two weeks before the board meeting?
I could do the tenth.
I'm fine with that.
Too good?
May tenth.
Okay. Do you want to have it at six-thirty? Is that good?
Yes.
Okay. So, do we need to make a motion to schedule this?
I'll make the motion to schedule a work session for May tenth at six-thirty.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Do we need to state what that work session's for?
Oh, yeah, probably, good one.
To discuss the Clark County New Early Childhood Center Preschool Construction Project BG twenty-one two-four-seven.
And so we're not...
Do you want to talk about the restrooms?
I was supposed to say, we're not gonna discuss the restrooms now.
Why don't you just say and/or?
And/or the restrooms at the GRC tennis courts.
Do you have to state what a work session's gonna...
If this, if you do a special meeting, if you're gonna take action.
Right, but I mean, do you have to state it tonight?
I don't think so, it just has to be on the agenda.
Because you can add and take whatever, I think, yeah, I don't think your, your motion has to actually say what you're gonna talk about, because ten things may come up between now and May tenth.
Let's just add and/or, and add that.
You can always modify, put it closer.
And I'll keep you all apprised on, there are things that we could package in with that, so it actually saves you time then on the end of the May meeting, if that's what you want.
Okay. I will, or you want to finish?
Sorry, Sherri, I interrupted you.
You want me to reword that?
Start from scratch.
Okay, make a motion to schedule a work session meeting for May tenth at six-thirty at the Board of Education to talk, you want me to include the Clark County Preschool? Okay, to discuss the Clark County New Early Childhood Center Preschool Construction Project BG twenty-one two-four-seven.
And/or?
And/or the restrooms at the GRC tennis courts.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, four to zero. Number five, consider review, action, and discussion of design development documents, including drawings BG two and BG three forms for the Clark County New Early Childhood Center Preschool Construction Project BG two-one dash two-four-seven, pending, pending, excuse me, KDE approval. Mr. Stump?
Good evening, I'm gonna introduce your architects that you've hired for the project Ross Toronto, they can introduce themselves, and John Codell, which is your construction manager, they prepared a presentation for you, so without further ado, I'll let them begin then.
Thanks, Donald, I'm Randy Rixey with Ross Toronto Architects, with me tonight is Brian Buckner, project architect on the project, and John Hagan.
Sorry to interrupt you, but can we move the podium to the middle?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. As Donald said, as the motion is, we're here to present design development documents for the new Clark County preschool project. Those documents consist of the drawings, and I think you got those in your board package, there's quite a number of drawings, they consist of site drawings, structural drawings, architectural drawings, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing drawings as well. Design development is about thirty-five percent complete with the documents. You also received a BG two, which is the KDE document that outlines the specification outlined for the project, it also establishes some energy usage goals, and documents some other key figures and aspects of the project. The other document that you received is a BG three, which is a project budget that's been updated with the design team, and John Hagan representing the construction team for the project. We also put together a PowerPoint presentation, you have a draft copy in your board package, we have updated the renderings, the images that were, they were placeholders in that package, but outside of that, everything is the exact same that you have in your package, and I think that's what we're gonna run through tonight. So the first thing, you've seen this graphic before, this is the schedule, we want to just keep you abreast of where we are within the overall project schedule. Again, we're at the design development stage, that's the middle design phase, we've reviewed and approved schematic design, we're here to present design development, and assuming that we get approval with design development, we'll go into construction documents, so that is to complete the rest of the drawing set, the technical specifications, and then John Hagan will actually be preparing the bid packages that will be bid out as part of the project. Beyond just completing the CDs, the construction documents, then we'll be in the bidding phase, and then once you, once the bids are received, and if those are approved, they will go into the construction phase of the project. We will be before you two more times before construction begins, I think that's important to note, we have this opportunity tonight to discuss the project, we will be before you with construction documents in July, that's the anticipated date, and then John Hagan will be presenting the bid results, hopefully at the August or September, the... They didn't let August, so we'll be, we'll be presenting the bid results in September. That's important, because there's, there's a lot of projects out there right now that we anticipate are becoming out to bid, and we, right now, in our current schedule, we are ahead of those projects, and we feel like it's important that we remain ahead of those projects, because if those other projects come out, the contractors will be filling up with work, and we may not get as good a participation within the, within the bid market. So with that, I'm gonna let Brian kind of review some of the specifics of the program, and where we are with regards to our current design, including some of the cost estimates that we have.
Okay, so, one of the things, you know, when we were here in January, just wanted to kind of recap some of the things that we had discussed in terms of the programming for the facility, the program based off the KDE model program, we're still well within the square footage of their gross maximum allowable. We did want to kind of talk about some of the areas that we have added some square footage to over the course of the project, that was also something that was part of the schematic design review that was submitted and approved in January. I've, I'm showing the full program up on the screen, I know it's really hard to read, so I have a recap slide, if you want to advance to the next slide, okay, perfect. Couple things to kind of note, kind of big picture, we had additional square footage that was added to the classrooms in the preschool to meet the head start requirements, so this could be a blended program, so each of the classrooms in the facility, instead of the KDE model program preschool size of eight-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet, we bumped those to nine-hundred, that includes the space that's allocated for the shared restrooms and the storage space between the classrooms, so when you take all of that out, we have more net square footage that goes back into the classrooms in order to meet the per-student square footage requirement from head start, that allows this program to be blended in terms of all of the classrooms meeting those requirements. We added additional office space that's above and beyond what KDE asked for in the model program for their administrative requirements. That's something that's not unique to this project necessarily, almost all of the projects that we see, I mean, ranging from... Almost all of the projects that we see, I mean, ranging from, you know, preschool all the way up through high school projects, the model program is woefully undersized for the type of administrative activities that we see. On this one in particular, we have a full-size FRC or Frisky, um, as part of that program. Um, so that includes, you know, a large, kind of larger, you know, kind of group space has work tables, wall cabinets, things like that, uh, to support students and families, uh, for this, for this particular program. We also have additional office spaces, um, to accommodate that, so both for the, the FRC and the Frisky staff. We have a group office that seats between five and six additional employees, um, staff for that particular facility. Um, we have an additional flex office that's also in the media center. So with there not being a full-time typical kind of media center specialist at the preschool level, we have what we're considered kind of a flex office in that area as well, just to be on the safe side. We're meeting the, the requirements for the model program of a media center and also kind of providing that flex space, um, as additional office space is needed. Um, the locally identified programming in the program document, we covered this back in January as well, um, is used for the extended learning areas, the kind of living room spaces between the classrooms that I showed you all on the floor plan in January. Um, that allows more learning activity within the building and more space that's, um, that's being added for that particular purpose. Um, the kitchen has also been increased over the KDE model program, and that is to accommodate the family-style dining process. Uh, we have additional storage capacity that's required. We're also trying to make that kitchen a hybrid kitchen. So in the event that multipurpose space needed to also accommodate cafeteria functions, it can do that. Uh, and the kitchen is also being designed to have serving line function, uh, in order to accommodate that if that's, if that's in need in the future, or even, you know, it, with the building opens, for instance. But we're trying to maintain the, the kind of hybrid function there, uh, for the facility and allow them additional versatility. Let's go ahead and advance. Getting into cost estimating, so this is just a kind of a recap of where the BG one status has been on this project. Um, December thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two, sorry, that should be twenty-twenty. Uh, based on the KDE facility replacement cost of two hundred and forty-two dollars per square foot at the time, uh, that has been updated, um, since then, uh, the estimated total project cost was nine million, three hundred thousand dollars. In twenty-twenty-one, September third, based on the updated KDE facility replacement cost, that, that went up to two hundred and sixty-three dollars per square foot. Uh, the estimated construction cost then went up to eleven million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the construction cost. The total project cost, which is additional, typically around eighteen percent additional, uh, went up to thirteen million and six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that was in September. A lot of things happened since then. We have seen a lot of cost increases kind of across the board. Um, John Hagan with Codell is here to kind of speak to some of these concerns as well. This is not something that's unique to this particular project. It is something that is occurring here in the bidding environment. We are seeing increases across the board, um, in terms of steel roofing materials, um, anything pretty much involving metal right now. We're, we're seeing a lot of issues with both from a lead time and procurement, um, status, and also, and also cost. Um, it is incredibly hard to get access to things like bar joists and other structural materials, and those costs have skyrocketed. Um, so when we started to look into cost estimating for this project, we worked really closely with John Hagan and Codell to look at, you know, kind of where we stand, if we were to bid this, um, in this timeframe, what does that start to look like for this particular project? Go ahead and advance this slide. So right now, and this is a, a little bit, I think, of a shock to some of us, we've, we've been talking about construction costs escalating rapidly. Right now, we're looking at potential square foot cost of about four hundred and four dollars per square foot for this project. Um, that's a significant change, uh, that takes the estimated construction cost of seventeen point two million dollars with an estimated total project cost of twenty point nine million. Um, I know that's a big number, that's a big change. Um, that's something that we're reacting to on other projects. As I said, it's not just this particular project. Um, while there are some unique circumstances to preschool construction and design, we have large playgrounds, we have, we have a ton of plumbing fixtures, um, and some things like that that do add kind of per square foot cost for that type of facility, um, we're, we're seeing that kind of across the board. This is not that far off from what we're seeing on, on other projects in the bidding climate here right now. And I'll let John Hagan speak to this a little bit as well, so.
You, you hit all of the high points right there. It is a crazy bidding environment. One thing I would point out also is the storm shelter, uh, as part of this project, so that's, that's an increased cost, and the site. Um, it's extensive site package for this particular project, but, um, you know, that's the site we, we have to work with. But, um, this is a pretty accurate number. Uh, we're seeing, uh, projects come in even higher than this in some instances, so, um, it's not just something we're throwing out there, uh, to cover ourselves. That's, that's true cost. So, um, hopefully things will be leveling out this summer, hopefully, but, uh, you know, nobody can see the future, but, um, it's, that's a true number.
See it leveling out, but you don't see it decreasing?
I don't know that the days of two hundred and twenty-five dollars a foot are, are ever coming back. I think that's, that's off the table, but, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough environment right now. Um, I, I wish I could say it's gonna, uh, level off and, and come back a little bit, but, uh, you know, this is the reality we're living in right now.
Yeah, nobody has a crystal ball, and we're actually, we took, we were originally scheduled to present design development in March, uh, we kind of knew that we needed to really spend some time in design development to, to flesh out the costs. And so we actually spent some extra time, uh, and separately, um, the design team did a cost estimate, and then John Hagan administered a cost estimate too, and then we came together and started and shared some numbers, and, um, miraculously, we were basically right on top of each other with the final number. Some of them were up and down a little bit, but in the end, we, we were right on top of each other with, with the total cost per square foot of the building. Now, I, I would like to hope that we're sharing with you a worst-case scenario, that we bid the project too late, um, and we bid this in a couple of months from now, um, and who knows exactly what that construction cost is going to be. And that's when you'll know the real cost for the project. And then John Hagan directs the bid packages, and then you bid for all those different bid packages, and then summarize, and the low cost, the low bidder for each of those bid packages, that will be the real cost of the project.
That's what's gonna drive the number down is, is competition. So, uh, you know, like you, you alluded to, the more bidders, more competition, that's gonna help push the cost down. So that's one of the reasons we wanna try to get out in front of these other, other districts and all the projects that are coming.
So with the supply chain issues that every industry's having today, what's the, what would be the, uh, estimate as far as a lead time goes from breaking ground to finishing the school? I mean, is it even possible to even think of that because you don't know, or do you know the lead times of a lot of these, a lot of the steel products you mentioned earlier?
Yeah, I mean, as we would get closer to bid time, we would build a construction schedule that is part of the bidding documents, and that locks these contractors into that timeline. Um, so, yeah, we'll have to gather any information we can, can get on, you know, availability of bar joists and whatnot.
I mean, the good news is that we have some site work that needs to be accomplished that will take a, a little while to do, and then concrete foundations, which there's not a shortage of that except for the rebar that goes into the concrete. So, uh, you know, some of the items that we're seeing along lead times out of our HVAC equipment, so basically sheet metal, since HVAC equipment, uh, electrical switch gear, um, you know, miraculously wood doors, wood doors seem to have a really super long lead time right now. Um, you know, but I think we would be in a good position to be able to order those very early in the project, and so when we needed those to be installed, those would be readily available. Cause you're looking at a twenty-four month plus construction schedule, um, so, you know, there's a lot of time built into that schedule, uh, for, you know, I think one of the first things that we would be pushing really hard for would be the structural steel package.
Yeah.
One of the things we've been looking at as well, just in terms of the lead time for steel members, um, looking at costs and, and, and that, um, we have kind of transitioned away from doing a lot of, from doing bar joists on this project almost entirely. Uh, we have, we're, we're kind of going back with standard steel shapes for this. So most educational facilities, most schools that have load-bearing, you know, concrete masonry walls, you'll see a lot of bar joists in them, but with the, with the extensive lead times, we've kind of transitioned away from those to kind of protect ourselves, uh, on this going into construction. Let's go ahead and advance, there we go. Um, you know, some of these things we have kind of talked about already, um, up to this point. Um, I know back in January, we kind of discussed a couple of these, but, you know, cost efficient design, we've, we've known that the construction prices were gonna be an issue. And so kind of from day one, we're making decisions on this project to try to simplify and make the, make the project more cost efficient. Um, we have, you know, we, we have simplicity, and we have repetition in the floor plan. We're not doing anything wild in terms of kind of angles, we're kind of keeping everything orthogonal. We're having as much repetition as we can with the classroom sizes, corridor widths, things like that to kind of simplify the overall structure of the building. Um, window sizing uniformity. So one of the things that we looked at early on, because we have a storm shelter component that includes classrooms, we're kind of locked in on a particular size and width of window that we can use in order to kind of protect that frame. Um, if we go bigger than that, we have to use a roll-down shutter system that gets anchored to the floor. Um, that drives up the cost, so we have, you know, kind of from a starting point, we looked at using a window size that works with the shutter system. That also allows us, because of the size of the window, to use an aluminum window system. So instead of storefront, where they stick, build that on site, uh, this can be built in a factory and then shipped and delivered to the site. It's more thermal efficient, it's less expensive, um, and it allows a little bit more control in terms of the delivery, uh, in construction of that product. Material selection, um, you know, looking, you know, working with John Hagan and then looking at what materials have, have skyrocketed in cost, uh, as well as lead time issues, we're focusing, you know, more heavily on materials that we know are both kind of long-lasting, have high, high longevity, um, and also are cost efficient. So we're looking to use more brick instead of stone and metal panel on this project in particular. Um, so, you know, we're kind of thinking through a lot of these things and trying to make the best decisions that we can moving forward to, to still have a, a really great building, but one that we're still making cost efficient measurements, you know, as, as we move through these phases. And we still have, you know, decisions that we can make and things that we can tweak moving through construction documents. Let's advance. Okay, so the site plan, let's go ahead and advance a lot, sorry. I might have to keep telling them this all the time, I'm used to just like clicking through things.
We need to get one of those.
So the site plan that we showed at the January meeting, this is kind of the, the quick kind of colored plan, uh, from the schematic design phase. If you advance to the next slide. We have, uh, taken this more into a design development level of drawing. So what you're seeing on the screen, I know it's probably a little bit difficult to read, but we have the, the kind of primary floor plan of the building. We are now kind of starting to detail and refine the parking, the drives, the access drives, uh, the drop-off areas for the school, uh, as well as the playground spaces. And so one of the things that we talked about at schematic design is that the way that the building is shaped, and we've laid out these small learning communities, we have two pocketed areas for two separate playgrounds, which works really well in terms of how we've kind of, um, separated the classroom groupings out. So, um, if you go to the next slide, I've kind of zoomed in on these a little bit, and this is straight out of our drawing, so I didn't, you know, didn't add a, pull out of color or anything to these, apologize. Um, the one on the right-hand side is the playground that's on the plain east side of the building, uh, that's the closest to the bus drop-off area of, of the building. This is more of a kind of hybrid passive-active playground space. We have some play structures in this area, um, hardscape surface, uh, as well as some seating benches and small kind of court space for students to gather there. Um, all of that's protected. We have a wall feature that separates that from the bus area, as well as utilizing gates, um, to keep the students safe on that side. Uh, the image on the plan, or the, on the left side of the screen is the plain west side of the building. That's the larger of the play areas. Um, we are showing on this particular image on the bottom, you'll see the alternate for the additional classrooms to get to four hundred and fifty students. So we're planning that playground around that being added into the project, whether it's at the, at the time of bid or a future phase of the work. So that is, you know, we're, we're grading that appropriately, and we're also reserving the space and making sure the playground works if, if that's taken, uh, at bid time. So again, we have more play structures on that side, we have shade structures as well as kind of a small classroom element. All of that is fenced in on that side, so that's the side that looks out towards the farm property. Um, we, you know, those students that are moving out of their classroom areas, um, into that play area are shielded and protected the entire time they're, they're out in that play space, so they can't just kind of run out past that fence line. Let's go to the next slide. Site development, um, the, since we met in January, the geotechnical exploration has been completed. John Hagan kind of alluded to this a minute ago. Um, it confirmed a few things that we knew about the site, one that we have sinkholes on the site, and that was something that we kind of covered at the January meeting. Um, it confirmed that we had two large sinkhole features on the site, uh, both kind of on the plain south side. Those water, the water feature underground extends up to the north and northwest on that site. Uh, the geotechnical exploration report also gave us recommendations for the stabilization and mitigation of these features. So that's gonna kind of include some filling in of some of the, the gapping that's occurring on those sinkholes and protecting that from further erosion, um, below grade. Due to the rock depth, so we have a lot of rock on the site, and that rock varies across the site. Due to the rock depth as determined by the auger bore refusal, so when they do drilling bores, they have a drilling rig that goes down. When that auger hits rock, it'll, it'll stop. And so that gives you a total depth of where we are. So that's important for us in terms of the structural design of the building, making sure that we have rock-bearing capacity for all of our load-bearing columns. And so when we have a transition in depth to the top of rock, that means that we have to have deeper footings. Um, on the north side of the building, that rock drops off, uh, at the worst-case scenario, I believe is about sixteen feet deep. So overall, it's about ten feet, uh, would be the average, uh, depth on that side, and that means that instead of having a spread footer that sits directly on the rock, we're having to use what are called caissons. So they drill a hole that goes down to the rock depth, and then they embed that into the rock surface, and all that gets filled with concrete. Looks like a big concrete pier, it's all below grade, you won't ever see it. Um, as a result of that, that's part of the reason that we have a little bit of an increase in cost. Um, luckily, one of the things that we had talked about early on was trying to reduce the construction time on this project by going with structural steel framing instead of load-bearing, uh, concrete masonry units, like we typically see in schools. Doing that allows us to do the caissons, and do this in a limited area. If we had done, uh, CMU load-bearing walls, we would be trenching down to rock in some of those areas or having to use a lot of earth infill. So, um, at the end of the day, while steel is more expensive, it's constructed faster, and we're able to use caissons in some more limited kind of engagement with the rock depth on the site. Due to the grade of the site, and obviously we know we have a lot of grade features moving there towards the north, we will be doing mass earth excavation on areas of the site. We are balanced right now between where we're cutting and filling, uh, earth on the site, um, where we have the parking on the north side where the parent lot is, um, we will have retaining walls on that side to mitigate and kind of transition between the grade as that drops down on that side. So we have looked at where the building pad sits, so the, the floor grade level, and making that in a way that we're able to kind of balance the fill and minimize the amount of earthwork. One of the things we talked about back in January at schematic design was where we placed the building on the site was the least impact in terms of masquerading, but we still will have some masquerading just due to the nature of the site and the, the topographical change. Is there any questions? I feel like I'm just like, a lot of information up there, so. Let's advance the next slide. Okay, let's talk about the floor plan really quickly, next slide. Sorry for these title size. It's always seems like a good idea to put them on there, and then when I'm not clicking myself. Um, on the floor plan, so this is again, the last floor plan that you saw was, was a, is still kind of a colored diagram, but we didn't have as much information in that floor plan, so we didn't have the, the beginnings of the furnishings, we didn't have the built-in casework, um, on the plane. So what I'm showing here right now is, you know, the titles, which obviously you can't read just because of the size, um, so we've, we've left the color legend on there. Um, the white blue color are all the primary classrooms for the preschool rooms. The yellow is circulation space, so hallway space, and the extended learning areas that are outside of the classrooms and their small learning communities. Um, so there's the, the living room spaces. The green is the multipurpose space, so that is a large kind of gross motor skill space that can also act and serve as a cafeteria. Um, that's five thousand square feet. So, uh, I know we talked about that last time, that is a thousand square feet larger than the existing cafeteria, um, at the preschool today, um, which they're using for a very similar function. Uh, kitchen cafeteria space on the plain south is orange, uh, and then all of our support spaces, so that means restrooms, we have a laundry facility, storage, things like that, are gray, and then we have a large, um, kind of gang shared restroom, that's that teal blue color. Uh, the red is the library and the media center there in the middle of the, of the The red is the library and the media center there in the middle of the, of the school. So, one of the things that we talked about before, and I won't, I won't get into the weeds too much with it, but, you know, the way that we've shaped this building, we have the small learning communities of, of six classrooms apiece, and we've kind of broken those off and situated them in a way that there's kind of an equitable distance to all the shared spaces. The multipurpose space, the media center administration up on the plain north. So, that way, you know, especially for students at this age range, we're not talking about long transitional periods of walking, you know, from one end of the building to the other. They all have a heavy, have the shortest possible distance to get to those shared spaces, kind of day in and day out, and having really great access to those play areas outside. So, they're not having to walk all the way around the building and certainly not having to cross kind of access drives and things like that that they currently have at the, at their facility. In this image, we're also showing caseworks, all the built-in components, the, the wall cabinets, the base cabinets, sinks, things like that. Anything that, you know, if you took the roof off the building and you shook it upside down, everything that stays in the building when you do that is part of the base bid for the project that's built in for the, for the building. The furnishings, the chairs, tables, things like that that are in the classrooms, that will be not in contract, but that is a line item on the BG-1. And we will show some, some of the concepts for those, and we've kind of walked through that with, with staff already as well. Let's advance to the next slide. So, just kind of recap, we have provided additional space for the multipurpose room to best accommodate the dual-function. We've expanded the storage capacity of the multipurpose room to allow it to accommodate the tables for the cafeteria. So, if you have an event where you want to have tables in the multipurpose space, large community gathering, things like that, or day-to-day kind of cafeteria use, if that ends up being something they, they go with, we have space to house those tables. So, those can be pushed away, covered up behind closed doors, so that they're not just kind of sitting up against the walls. So, during kind of average kind of gross motor skill use in that space, they can swap out what's being stored at any given time, and it adds to that kind of hybrid nature of the building. Again, the locally identified program allocation was used for the extended learning spaces, which can be also used as flex space for gross motor skills for those students, they're not always having to travel to the multipurpose space. That allows for more group and kind of project-based learning activities at the 3K level outside of the classroom. It's very versatile. We looked at several different precedents, and that was something that they really liked, having that access to. And again, we've expanded the administrative suite to accommodate the family resource center and additional group office space. So, this is an image I showed back in January, so this is kind of a, a quick kind of massing diagram where we start to talk about the heights of walls and features on the building. And so, you kind of get a little bit of a window into that space. It's color-coded then to reflect back to the floor plan, so we start to kind of piece it together. I know it's, it's hard to read just floor planes and then kind of transition into three-dimensional and try to understand what that looks like. Let's go to the next slide. One of the things that we've been really interested in, since we have these kind of four, we have three key base bid small learning communities, with a fourth that could be added into the 450, is trying to incorporate some thematic elements into the school. So, one of the things that we talked about a lot during programming was the, the kind of heavy nature, things that we have with the students at this facility. We think that's great, that kind of connection to nature and the things that they're learning about day in and day out, how that kind of references the world around them. And so, for us, when we looked at some of the other precedent schools, in order to, you know, make things more exciting for the students and also make things a little, a little clearer in terms of, you know, wayfinding and things like that in this age range, we thought it would be a really good idea to kind of identify some of these small learning communities with a specific, a particular thematic element. So, some of the things that we've kind of talked about, again, kind of relate back to geography that's specific around this area in central Kentucky. So, the river, we talked about Kentucky River a little bit, would be one, and we're thinking about that in the way that we have all the corridor spaces, the transitional spaces for those students, you know, that's a transportation element within the facility, kind of relates back to the river. And so, things that we use in terms of colorways, tile patterns, things that we're doing on the ceiling and kind of graphic elements in the building, could kind of relate to that in that space. And then, looking at the small learning communities, the six classrooms, we're looking at one being kind of forest-themed, so Ganga Boone National Forest, the gorge, gorge theme for one of them, and then one that maybe just kind of like central Kentucky, Bluegrass region. Again, all of these are subject to change, I mean, depending on the staff and everybody, if you all have additional feedback for these, we're totally looking for that, but that'll help us kind of identify, again, colors and graphic elements. All of those would be ultimately decided during construction, that's not something that you have to sign off and stamp on today or anything like that. Let's go to the next slide. So, the core learning communities, so this is just a, this is a screen grab out of Revit, our, our computer program that we use for, for modeling the building. This is kind of what that looks like if you took the roof off of the small learning communities. These are the six classrooms, what you're seeing here in the middle, the, the living room space there in the middle, the extended learning area that those classrooms are situated around, that provides that additional kind of versatile space outside of the classrooms. All of that's compartmentalized, so that's locked off from the main corridors, it's kind of a safe space and allows them to brand out, you know, either small groups of students or a whole classroom worth of students for additional activities, again, kind of group work, project-based learning, you know, arts crafts, gross motor skills, you name it. We're providing in this area, we're showing additional countertop space, we have a sink in that area, and then we're also incorporating two double-door closet function spaces. So, one of the things we really liked about that, when we looked at the YMCA Center for Children in Lexi-Ten, over near Lexumart, that was one of the ways that they were kind of handling other, their art storage, and that was something some of the staff really kind of latched on to. So, we thought about applying those at each of the ELA spaces in the building, just in terms of having that additional storage capacity that every school seems to be looking for. So, in this image, you'll start to see the, the makings of the interior lightouts, the tables and the chairs, the built-in casework, things like that for each of the classrooms. One of the things that I'll note, we went through several iterations of classroom layout for the preschool classrooms. What we really liked about this one is that as you enter the roof, all the cubbies, the teacher station, and the primary kind of activity storage space is right there in that initial threshold. So, we'll see that as the, there's kind of L-shaped table at each of these classrooms that has a sink on the end of it, so that's the primary activity sink for kind of, you know, daily activity use. And that kind of creates a, a little bit of a wall and a division within the classroom. So, you have an activity area, and then you have the primary centers area. So, all of those are kind of broken off with blocks center, reading center, art center, et cetera. And being able to accommodate that in a way that reflects and kind of changes, meaning based on the classroom and instructor's preferences. So, I thought that would be a little bit better way of kind of showing what's going on inside the actual classrooms and the groupings in terms of the visual aid. Let's go to the next slide. So, material inspiration. I talked a little bit about utilizing a lot of brick. Brick can sometimes be boring. We get that. We like brick, I like brick, love it. But we started to think about, a little bit about, you know, how are we kind of tying into the themes within the building that we've kind of established, and one of those being the gorge theme, and one of the things that's central to central Kentucky in terms of the geology here, of which we are experiencing some of the downsides of that on this particular site, is karst geology, a lot of limestone-rich, you know, structure below the soil. One of the really cool things, if you've been to the gorge, is that you've noticed these amazing striations of the material of the limestone. Let's go to the next slide. So, one of the things that we looked at was identifying a brick pattern and kind of peeping within maybe like four or five brick types and layering those in a way that's reminiscent of the limestone features that we see in central Kentucky. So, I thought that was, you know, we kind of thought that was a really interesting way of applying a brick pattern and not making it just look like, like the red kind of schoolhouse brick. Let's go to the next slide. So, getting into some of the exterior images, so this is an aerial rendering of what the building would look like on the site. So, in the foreground of the image, you'll see the bus drop-off area, the school buses there. On the, on the kind of right side of the image, you'll see the parent drop-off. So, the parent loop, the bus loop are totally separate from one another once they get onto the site. So, they'll use Martin Luther King on the plain north to access the site. They break off per KDE guidelines, makes it safer for the students and parents kind of maneuvering through the site. Parents will move, will drive off to the right and then loop back around. We have the potential for double stacking vehicles to allow for easier access and less distance for students to walk to the building. We have two canopies, entrance canopy features, one that's a larger, a little bit taller one that comes out to the parent drop-off, and then one that kind of angles back towards the bus drop-off. One of the things that I'll note about the day-to-day activity of the building, with this particular age range of students, there's a lot of kind of hand-to-hand, you know, moving, you know, their hands on them as they walk off the bus, handing them off to another instructor. And so, being able to offer them a couple of different ways to enter the building was really important for us. So, with the drop-off, the bus drop-off being on the side of the building, we have two of the small learning community groupings of classrooms. We're providing gates at those locations, so those students can actually directly enter into their classrooms from that area. It also offers the students that are on the opposite side of the building, the option to actually move through that classroom if it's raining, for instance, or they can use the canopy there that's on the plain north to access to the front of the building. Does that make sense? So, we're, we're kind of providing them, you know, more than one option for entering the building for student drop-off and kind of easing, easing that for everybody. What you'll see in the middle, so this is, you know, this is obviously, this is kind of like the next step from what we showed in the massing diagram. In the middle of the building, we have these two kind of butterfly roofs that go back towards one another to allow natural daylight into both the media center space and the multipurpose space. So, with those being kind of centrally located within the building, they don't have really great access to exterior walls, and so it was really important for us to bring in a lot of natural daylight to those spaces. So, that's how we're kind of accommodating that in those areas. It also adds a little bit of a feature to the building that we think is really nice just in terms of the approach and the view as you, as you move into the site. Any questions about this? We'll move on to the next slide. So, this is the forefront of the building, so this would be coming from the parent drop-off. So, you see the kind of primary canopy there that's a little bit taller, and then you've got the shorter canopy there that goes off to the bus drop-off side. We, you know, we're, we're careful not to make these canopies too big, both from a cost standpoint, but also from a height standpoint. There's a, there's kind of a height where those become really ineffective in terms of sheltering from rain. So, you get kind of above 12 feet or so, and they just don't work very well. So, we've tried to maintain that. You know, also, one of the things that we've talked about a tonder in this project is just the scale of everything. We don't want this to feel like some massive kind of cavernous building for three and four-year-olds. And so, it was really important for us to kind of break that down and, and kind of remind ourselves over and over again, you know, we're dealing with really little kids here. So, what are some ways that we can kind of address ceiling heights, window heights, things like that, that are to their scale, to their eye level, and not making it feel as intimidating going into the building? And again, that was part of the reason that we went with the option of having these kind of small learning communities to, again, kind of break down the scale of their interaction and the amount of students that they're kind of around day-to-day and making it feel less intimidating. Next image. And this is the media center for the school. So, right now, the, the existing preschool does not have a media center. There's a media center space that was allocated for Hannah McClure when it was an elementary school. That space right now is kind of a hybrid function. We have some, there's some gross motor skill space in there, lots of storage. So, there's, there's book storage, but they're also storing bicycles and trikes and things like that in that space. It's not used as a traditional media center. With us kind of breaking out and having a dedicated multipurpose space and then also gross motor skill space in the ELAs, we really kind of thought about, what does it look like to have a, you know, a functioning media center for a preschool? And so, what that looks like, you know, we, we think of this less as like a traditional library space and more of a hybrid function space for them and the staff there. One, in which we have book storage and access to kind of analog reading materials and things like that for the students, but also one that's kind of incorporating book play and kind of project-based learning in that space. And so, we've kind of carved out a couple of ditch openings that you'll see with the kind of casework off to the side, off to the left of the image, as kind of project stations. So, there's tables and small group workstation, expanded storage, access to sinks and things like that in those little book areas. So, you can take students and work specifically in those areas and allows them that kind of additional versatility in terms of how they're using and accessing the space for, for learning. On the very end of it, we actually have kind of like a quiet reading zone too, so we'll have some kind of book storage along the walls in that particular area and then some kind of soft seating elements there as well. So, again, we're kind of looking at, you know, heights for the students, and so we've, we have some glazing there on the front, some windows there on the front that look out into the corridor. And above, so on the top, you'll see where that, that clear story window is that's allowing a lot of daylight access into the building. So, we think that, you know, kind of cutting, you know, cutting the proportions of the space down with that wall that we have the graphic pattern on, is, is kind of a nice way to make that space feel a little more proportional in size to the students in the facility and also how they'll be using it kind of day-to-day. And next slide. This one's a little poor-hold. Just if, if approved this evening, the next step would be for us to submit the design development drawings and documents to the Kentucky Department of Education for their DD review. We have, we've received their schematic design review, we responded to that already. So, this part of the review, we would send documents, we would send the BG-2, the BG-3 for their approval, as well as the, the crime prevention through environmental design checklist that you all have, have looked at and signed off on already. And then the, we will begin the construction document phase as Randy spoke about earlier. Is there any questions or?
So, that, that was a lot of information and kind of a long presentation, so are there any questions?
Can you repeat, start from the very beginning?
We can do that, we can do that. It has to be faster than second time.
I want to really thank Mr. Buckner, Mr. Brookshire, and Mr. Codell. We've, this, this brief presentation tonight really was a product of a lot of meetings, a lot of extra investment on, as you heard, on both of their company's parts, getting together, making sure that they verify and validate the information that they were giving us. The recap was really important to me that you all got to see where we've, just reminding, you know, I wasn't here at the very beginning either, so it was also good for me. But a lot of extra time and planning went in, went into what you got to see today that is hopefully front-loading for that work session that we'll be able to have. They, they are already aware that we wanted to have this mid-May work session, so they will be available on May 10th, along with another partner that will make sure that is there to have that full conversation with you all as well. But, so, I'm restating that so that you feel more comfortable in moving the project forward until we, so that we know we can if we want to. And that's, that's what tonight's goal is.
Any questions? I make a motion to approve number five as written.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Opposed, none. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Really nice work. Number six, consider action and discussion of pay application number 1525-08 to Ross Toronto Architects for the Clark County New Early Childhood Center Preschool Construction Project BG-21-247 in the amount of $49,066.25. Mr. Snapp.
That pay application will get you up to the design development phase where we are at now, so the firm is being asked, or is asking the board to, to pay them for the work up to this point.
Any questions? Somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Motion carries 4-0. Number seven, consider action and discussion of pay application number 11150402S and ME Inc. for the Clark County New Early Childhood Center Preschool New Construction Project BG-21-274 in the amount of $6,880.92.
That's the, to finalize the executed contract for that company to do the survey work that the architects alluded to in their presentation for the Strode Station site for that property, to give them the report that we have in hand, and that pay application will close the project out for, for their services.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve, bottom seven as written.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. Number eight, consider action and discussion of construction of a new restroom facility for the George Rogers Clark Tennis Court Facility. Mr. Snapp.
As I hope you would recall, we had some community members approach the board multiple, several meetings ago and asked the board to consider the construction of a restroom facility on our tennis court location so that would make them eligible for regional and state tournaments and to accommodate the tennis population out there. I think we might have been the Booster Club that approached you, if I recall correctly. Well, from that point, we, we, we requested your architects to give us a rendering of what a restroom facility would look like on that site if it were designed as, as a project in, in that overall BG. And fortunately, Ross Toronto provided drawings to us pro bono, and we gave those drawings to your construction manager, and they estimated the price of the project based on those drawings. And at that time, again, multiple months ago, the estimate was roughly $144,000. Now, that included a, a facility that would, would have the veneer, rockwork or stonework that would match your high school shingled roof, CMU block building with, with the toilet sink on both sides for male, female, and a small storage area in the middle. And it was designed based on the location and how that would fit into that, into that schematic of that tennis court. So, it would, the, the proposal and the drawings would have the, the facility facing the front of the tennis court with the entrances there and the back of it being more toward the baseball, football fields. There's a sidewalk that goes along the front of that tennis court that would enter and enter directly into that facility. And there would be some storage area or some opportunity in that middle area for some storage or food or concession, something that could be accommodated in some capacity for that building. So we, we put that out to bid. We had one bid return for $138,600, I think is what's in your packet. And I'll note that, that we were advised that projects of this size may not receive many bids at the, in this current market because most of our contractors are interested in bigger projects. And I think this effort played out that perfectly. We had one bid come in that matched the specs and no one else showed an interest. I had four people request packets in which I submitted, but only one bid came back. The other three decided not to bid on the project. So that was again, from, from bids several months ago, that's the current market. And the board could either consider that project through several funding options. If you were considering purchase or building that product, you could actually address it through a change order in a current BG for the gymnasium football stadium. We still have, we still have monies in about $300,000 in that, in that BG one that will either, that could either be spent, spent on that project. The tennis court was part of that original BG with a gym and a football stadium, if you'll recall. So we could use that money to address a facility if you were interested. Of course, if you went that route, then we would have to submit a change order to KDE which would include markup for your architects, your construction managers, your contractors and things of that nature through BG contract. Other options could include using capital outlay funds that you have appropriated, which is restricted funds for, specific for building projects of this nature, or you could use your general fund. KDE has told us that if we use anything that's restricted, like capital outlay, for example, we would have to go through the BG process, your BG one, and, and, and follow that project. If we did, if we use general fund, then you would not necessarily have to go through the BG project. You could go ahead and start the project and implement it on your own, under the governance of your, of your maintenance director or director of operations. So having said all of that, I know that's a lot of information. If you're interested in that project, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, or we can address them in the workstation, workstation if you'd like. But you do have a current bid on the table to say that we will bid this facility for you at this price and lock into that if you wanted to choose that tonight, or you could table that and, and we could look at other alternatives if you wish.
Is this bid, how long is this bid good for?
It's, it's probably good for 30 days.
When did you receive it?
Just on the 15th, Wilton.
Dr. McCollus, if we wanted to proceed with this, how would you recommend that we go about paying for it?
Well, we've gone back and how would we recommend going about paying for it? I'm going to ask Ms. Ellis, will you, do you mind coming up and she, we, the three of us discussed this the other day. Can you tell them the pros and cons, that same conversation that we went through on using capital outlay versus general or vice versa?
And so as Mr. Stump had stated, I reached out to our contact about the capital funds and the answer back to us in using restricted funds is we would have to go through that BG process to access those dollars. So you know with the BG process, it's that step process of you've got to bring the BG one back to you all to approve, we've got to get it in the backpack system, it's got to go through that process to approve, which we know there's legislation that's trying to help speed that up, but we're still kind of in a limbo with that.
And that costs us more money, right? There's markups.
Yes, so they have, if it goes through that BG process, they're also recommending a general contractor cost with that. You also have to put up a contingency piece with it too when you do a BG. So there's, you do have this pot of money that is for buildings, which seems like the logical monies you would want to use, but there is some red tape to get through that. Whereas if you use your general fund, as he stated, you don't necessarily have to do the BG project and it's a quicker turnaround.
And I'll note too, you have, you have another item on your agenda tonight, that is response to the governor's emergency order through the legislature, the most recent legislature that will, if you adopt the resolution, we will not be required to ask KDE's approval for any BG project. You can move forward because there's been serious issues and the governor's determined it's an emergency. KD has been so, so slow in approving BGs that he's established an emergency order. If you choose to adopt that tonight, we will not be accountable, and it goes with RAC as well. We will not be accountable following the BG process or asking KD's approval for BG projects or for funding projects. We can move forward immediately and complete BG forms only for the purposes of documentation, showing KD this is what we're doing. So it's going to give you considerable leverage in pursuing projects. And it also, by the way, I would just kind of make a pledge for it, a pledge for it, it also is going to allow you to use funds for extracurricular activities in any level of priority on your facility plan. Before, you couldn't use level five projects, for example athletics, and pay for them with fines. This, 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 this resolution won't allow you to do.
So if we adopt that, I mean, we could use the BG funds essentially?
We could use our BG funds. You're going to end up paying markups, but that allows us to access the capital outlay. Can you, can you discuss the impact that paying for this out of our general fund will have?
If you choose general fund, I mean, at this point, it does come from your contingency, which we have a little over eight million in contingency, which we're banking on with our budget that was presented at the draft level. And then there's going to be considerations that are brought to you at the tentative level, especially in regards to salaries. So anything you choose to use out of your general fund then decreases your budget moving forward with your beginning balance rollover. So you've got to keep that in mind. Obviously, $140,000 seems small to an eight million, but when you add up all the pieces of what you're going to be presented kind of next month in the presentation with your tentative budget, it's a significant dollar amount too, so.
So the capital outlay and making a change modification to the existing BG is the same, basically same process?
Correct. I'm sorry, repeat that question again.
Capital outlay, using capital outlay funds or doing a change modification to the existing BG for the, that we have, and I, and why isn't that closed, by the way? Before you answer that, but the process is the same either way, correct? Or is it the same?
The answer is yes, unless you prove the resolution tonight, then the answer will be you don't have to follow BG process like you do with the current BG that's existing that we're trying to re-rate and close. That's a whole different ballgame. If you choose to use capital outlay funds now instead of your BG on the gymnasium funds and you approve the resolution tonight, you will not have to file, ask KD's approval. You'll just have to send a BG one to them and notify them that you're using those funds for that project.
So why isn't ESER funds considered here?
ESER funds are complicated. With ESER funds, you have to use prevailing wage. So it significantly increases the cost of construction when contractors bid prevailing wage prices. It's, I mean, it's, I've been told up to 40% increase on your, on your project using federal funds and ESER is a federal fund.
And then the last thing that we discussed was, is there a possibility that things are going to come back down and how quickly that will happen? And we, could we get one of the nice, you know, we want, we like the aesthetics to all look nice. So we could go with one of the metal, like fabricated buildings that's, that's nice, but not as nice obviously as this. And that's still going to cost us around 30 or 40,000. And then if the price comes down, well, then we've still spent about the amount that it would have cost us to build this now, regardless of which funding stream that we decide to use. So, and of course, she's, she's back hard and fast from yesterday. So, you know, those were some of the discussions that we had.
One other point, if you, if you choose not, if you choose to build the building and not use the BG that's current on the gymnasium, then that money will roll over into an account that increases your capacity for bonding.
So what's the estimate? What would be the estimate if we, if we did the capital outlay? You said it's going to increase because we have to get approvals and contractors.
If you use capital outlay, it would be the 138.6.
It's the BG.
If you go with, with a project that's currently existing on the gymnasium, then you're going to pay markups to your architects, to your construction managers and to your contractors.
About what percent?
Well, each of their percentage rates.
Okay.
It's pretty, pretty significant.
I figured, I didn't know if there was like a generic rule of thumb you follow or?
And if those are questions you want us to have more solid answers for, then we can, we can get all of that information to make sure that we're better prepared for the work session. That's why we wanted that on there, so that you could hear all of this and then not feel like you're hastily making a decision unless you feel really comfortable with it.
As long as the bid is still valid by the time we have the work session, then I don't see why we.
It's going to be just.
Yeah.
Could you call and see if he would honor?
Absolutely.
That, okay.
I would feel that he would.
And if there's a way, maybe like you could personally call and, I don't know how, where this was advertised or whatever, but maybe like personally solicit a couple of bids or something just so we have some comparison of sorts, I think would be helpful.
So in your notes here, you mentioned perhaps doing general fund and then being reimbursed by BG.
Well, and that's what I was kind of referencing, that if, if that, if, if you don't spend the money on the BG for the gymnasium right now, that money will roll back over into account. And at that time, I thought it was general fund, but Alicia told me it's not really considered general fund. It's a construction fund that kind of lives in there. That would increase your, that, that, that your, your bonding agent would, could, you could spend on construction projects or you could use to increase your bonding capacity. That's what I was really referencing there. It wouldn't go into your general fund contingency as Alicia's brought to my attention.
Do we have any, what's in our construction fund right now?
I would defer.
And that can be.
When you say construction fund is what you're asking, I'm sorry.
He just referred to a construction fund that we would, that we'd roll that money from the gymnasium over to the, a construction fund.
So the way that works is it's, it lives in the world of that BG number in the fact pack system as a residual on that project, which we cannot tap into till we do the entire BG process of BG's ones, threes, fours, fives, and it just sits there waiting for us. So, I mean, we have the money in our construction, so it's in our bank account where we got the bonding money, so it's sitting at traditional bank in our bank account. But it's not tappable or usable until we have all of those paper processes completed and then you have to commit it on another BG one. So it's like one of the payment line items where you say we're going to use bonding or general fund or capital outlay. One of those options is another BG number and you list the amount that's left over from a project.
And once your BG five's complete, the restrictions on it goes away and then you could use it for other projects.
Another, another BG project.
Another BG project.
Didn't you say in the beginning there was like 300,000 left?
Yes, so between the two projects, there's about 300,000 on your athletic. You've got the Campbell renovation that we did close out finally a little, it's been several months ago. I think there was like 120,000 on that. It's on the contingency document, but, so any of those, once we officially get them closed and they're residuals in the fact pack system, like that's how that, that system works that, that keeps track of all of our projects for us.
So why isn't the gymnasium closed? I mean, is.
Because we're still negotiating punch list items with Rising Sun and with Esio who did the turf. We have several items that we've been negotiating on the, on the punch list that we haven't been satisfied with. So we've held the money back until those items have been addressed. And one of those has been the logos on the, on the two fields are, were out of whack and then the hillside, fall off on the hillside and behind the practice football state, football field out there that's going into the stream. We weren't satisfied with the work down there and, and we've been negotiating with the contractors and I think we finally have come to terms and that work's getting ready to start. But up until this time, we've been steadfast on holding the money until they do what we expect that they do.
It's been a while now.
It's been a while now, but it's been a process with us not releasing the money. We've refused to release the money until the project is done to satisfaction and I think we've come to terms with the contractors. That, that, that meets our, meets our expectations.
And I will say Codell and Ross Toronto have been wonderful about going through line by line, 170 or more items with us walking, coming, coming in also and verifying the punch list after the information comes back to us. And Mr. Stump has, has, has just been incredible. Expertise and leadership and flexibility, guidance, it's, it's been remarkable.
We told him, and that, it's been ugly at times, but, but I think we've come to terms.
I guess we need to see what we're going to do, if we're going to just carry it or wait.
Do you have an overall recommendation on spending, if we go ahead and approve this tonight, using our capital outlay?
I would recommend capital outlay, especially since the process can be expedited now if we pass with the new House bill.
I would just be a little hesitant about delaying too long because I think as the architects and construct managers have just shared with you, things are changing fast and we're seeing change, changes in prices in a matter of weeks. And they're not going down. If you want it done, you probably need to.
So that becoming of our general fund, our contingency fund is what your recommendation?
Well, it, I would, it wouldn't matter to me whether it's general fund or capital outlay. I think both ways, it would cost you the same. I, I think I would follow Alicia's recommendation, use capital outlay. We'll submit the BG one and if you approve the resolution tonight, we'll, we'll submit the BG one and begin with the process. Or we could go to a work session and talk about a metal building if you want a metal building out there, but the aesthetics of a metal building is going to be a compromise.
I don't want a metal building, I think that, that would just.
So within the bid, it's, it looks like there's a storage, you know, storage in the middle. And you said earlier that it could be used maybe as a concessions or something like that, but it's not, it's not plum for that though, right?
Yeah, it's pretty small, but we could put a window, or a door window or something where they could pass things through. But it's not, it's not spec for heating or air.
Okay.
So, you know, we, we could always go in and put a mini split or something in there if that's, but there is a middle area there that's designed, you can see it on your drawings, that, that they could use for something that's, that's not really specified for anything other than storage. But if they wanted to store food in there, it would be very secure. And we could put a window in that door or somewhere where they could pass things and we could heat and cool it if we, if you wanted.
I mean, the whole purpose, I mean, one of the, one of the, one of the requests was to have restrooms there to be able to host tournaments, okay? So if they're going to host tournaments, wouldn't they almost need or, you know, need a concession area?
I would, I would say that that seems logical.
Yeah.
Or they, or they could set something up during the, during the tournament as long as they had access to. Now, if, if, you have to be careful too, if you start adding sinks, you're going to need hot water, you're going to need, you're going to have to satisfy some other specs related to sinkware and food sauce.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, they're probably not going to use it as much as like a, a baseball or football, I wouldn't think. If I'm wrong, please somebody tell me.
Your population's going to be not, not near as much.
But you, but having, having a place where you can bring in, you know, coolers and be able to sell pop and snacks and, you know, at the, at the tennis matches, I would think would be advantageous.
That might require a different spec. If you're talking coolers, then you're talking dedicated wires and service.
No, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about bringing in.
Hand coolers.
We're not a law school, though.
That's not his world anymore.
No, we don't pack hand coolers.
Yeah, I just think it would, you know, and have that ability to pass from that area over to the, to the sidewalk area.
Well, we could proceed with that intent in mind and, and look at adding a window. I'm sure I could compromise with, or I can negotiate with, with a contractor on doing something that would make that more conducive to passing food.
And what do y'all think?
I think Randy will probably hook us up with this, since he had just said this whole thing.
I think the folks that have been very passionate about the project for the tennis court, not for the fact that they want it for their luxury, but the opportunity to have more things, it would, it would be a nice benefit.
Well, they, they've gathered the money to put the netting up on the, on the courts, make it comply with the requirements of tournaments. So they're boosters that raised the money and they're putting the netting up and, you know, they're taking it seriously and they want that to be a competitive facility.
Well, it would just complete the facility.
I'm sorry.
We've done it, it would complete the facility. We've done it for.
Everybody else.
Yeah, for all the other entities. So on that note, I think I'm going to make the motion to approve the new restroom facility for the George Rogers Clark Tennis Court Facility, not to exceed.
140.
140 and to be paid out of capital outlay.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good, great, thank you. Good discussion. Thank you, Mr. Stump.
You're still up, don't leave, come back. Yeah. Number nine, consider action and discussion to adopt a resolution as required notice to KDE of the intent to operate Clark County Public Schools under the provisions of House Bill 678.
That's correct. And you have a sample from KSBA that would satisfy that resolution. You would just need to simply give notice to KDE that you've adopted by majority that resolution. And from that point on, even retroactively, it would, it would, those applications would have, would, would be in effect. We would not have to request KD's permission to start new projects, to seek funding, to, you know, for, for any, any BG projects that we, like we have in the past.
So we would need to request, we would need approval to start soliciting bids? Is that correct?
No.
We wouldn't? So how does that affect preschool or does it?
That's a good question. I might defer that one to Mr. Brookshire.
Basically, if you all adopted this, we would not necessarily need to submit the design development documents that you all just approved to KDE and wait for their approval. Nor when you all approved CDs when we were back in July, would we need to wait for permission for K, from KDE to go out to bid, which oftentimes takes several weeks. So it could potentially speed up the process of that, of receiving bids. You would actually potentially get bids earlier and be able to review those earlier. So.
So we could possibly get bids in July instead of August.
You may be able to go out to bid in July and take bids in August and present those to your August board meeting as opposed to your September board meeting.
Would affect change orders all through the line? I mean, it's just.
And Ms. McCoy just pointed out that KSBA recommends it and I'll also go. And Ms. McCoy just pointed out that KSBA recommends it, and I'm also working with KASA and other superintendents that are already starting to pass the resolution. So we didn't just get it and say, oh, this sounds like a good idea. I was to share with Mr. Brookshire, different communities know that we're wanting to build something. They're also wanting, so we're always comparing square footage rates and all of the complications or headaches. And so this was one of the solutions. But KSBA did also put their stamp of approval on this resolution as well.
But the resolution also says that if we choose, we can always ask KDE's advice and support and oversight if we so chose.
At a later time, like we could receive the bids, we could look at the bids and it's like, let KDE look at it at that point?
You're absolutely correct.
KDE is always supposed to be there as a resource to ask questions of. We're just not gonna be waiting on permission from them to do things, move forward. A couple of other notes about that. When you adopt the resolution, it does not apply to any project that is using ESER funds. ESER funded projects are still gonna have to go through the normal KDE process because those are federal funds and KDE is seen as the distributor of that grant. The, yeah, I think that's it.
So the sheer project is, we're proposing to use ESER funds for that project. That would have to follow the process, you can add the adoption.
I've been involved in a couple of other districts locally that have adopted this in the last couple of weeks since they've had the board meeting. So I have not heard anybody make an argument in the negative of why you would not adopt this because you always have the option to submit to KDE if you want to.
That's what I was gonna ask, what's the negative to it that it doesn't seem to have on it?
Any questions? Do you have any questions for Ms. McCoy?
Do you have a heater?
No, it feels fine.
I heard you had me turning it down.
It feels fine. I make a motion to approve out of nine. Actually, I make a motion to approve resolution as required notice to KDE to the intent to operate Clark County Public Schools under the provision of House Bill six seventy-eight.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor? Motion carries four zero. Number ten, consider action and discussion of school summer facilities projects list.
I'm gonna ask Billy Damron to join me here. He's worked a lot on this project as well and on our PowerPoint, so he can help support me in answering any questions you might have. But annually, we have practiced for many years now asking our principals to submit summer work project requests to the board in advance of summer. So we're trying to do this as early as we can, anticipating that if you do approve projects, there's gonna be extended lead time with some of the materials that might be involved with these projects. We're trying to do it as early as we can. If we get approval from you today, then we'll actually put these out to bid with the expectation of starting them immediately when school is out. So the principals have submitted to us their request list. They're reflected on the document that you have and are reviewing as they have submitted it. They're prioritized. And we've also included the projected costs of our blacktop coating and striping, recoating and striping and blacktop repair. And on that list as well, we are on a five-year blacktop coating and striping plan. This is our third year in that plan and these are the projects specific to what needs to be done based on the age of our blacktop in our district to ensure that we stay on that five-year plan. If we fail to address that five-year plan, then we're gonna have deteriorating blacktop that at some point will cost you a lot more to replace than it would be to coat. For those of you who know blacktop, you always have to have these recoded on a regular basis in order to keep the water from penetrating and expanding and freezing and busting the blacktop out. So GRC, we've done it once so far and it's almost ten years old. So we gotta get, we've gotta get a lot of their parking lots redone in order to keep on that schedule that's presented to you there. So we have two separate sections on that document, one for blacktop coating and striping and the other is for blacktop repair and generally blacktop repairs and some additions at the bus garage. Billy's prepared some overviews of each site. If you're interested in looking at specifically what areas at the schools will be addressed, if you have that interest, we're prepared to share that with you. If you have any questions about any particular projects on, under any of the schools, we're prepared to address that for you. Our goal with addressing the line items for each of the budget was to try to protect the general fund contingency as much as we possibly could. So we put most of the blacktop repair and blacktopping over in our capital outlay. And if you have any questions about the amount of monies that's left or able to do in capital outlay, Alicia will be able to address that with you. But she's looked at this and has ensured me that we have sufficient money in capital outlay to cover what's recommended under that particular line item. We've looked at ESER, we've looked at the maintenance budgets. We've looked at Safe Schools, which gets close to a hundred thousand per year, eighty thousand per year. So anything that related to Safe Schools, we try to put under that account. Anything related that would fall under the classification for ESER, we put under that account. Anything that would satisfy capital outlay requirements, we put under that account. Everything else, we put under the general fund, which is what the figure you're looking at now. In fact, I think last year we asked you for significantly more than that than we're asking you this year. So for that amount of money, you can do, you can address a hundred percent of what your principals are asking for in their buildings.
Mr. Damron, do you have anything for us?
The only thing that's changed is the whitetop ceiling and repair. We got a call today, the material that our main contractor uses is not available, will not be available. They're expecting a thirty-five percent increase, which is gonna be probably about forty thousand dollars. That call came in about two thirty today and it was too late to get that to you guys. Other than that, I think the numbers are gonna be pretty close unless material just does something really weird in the next month or so.
And Billy's worked really hard to get these price quotes for you as accurate as we can. We got this to you, you know, end of last week, but let me tell you, it's been hard getting the contractors to give us figures and holding them to the floor on this. But I think those figures you see are about as accurate as we're gonna get as estimates.
On some of these quotes, on anything that's heating and air, the electrical side, they'll give us a quote for five days. So every five days, those quotes will change. And it seems they're going up anywhere between three and five percent per month.
And when do you plan to start on this?
Well, if you approve both projects tonight, we'll put them off the bid here very, by the end of the week. We'll run them in the paper for probably two weeks. And then after that, we will work with the, we will award the bids and then we'll work with the contractors on starting as soon as they possibly can, understanding that we're still in school. For the projects that we can address while kids are in buildings, we'll address those for the ones we can. We'll wait till last day of school is out and then we'll start them then. The painting, we'll have to wait till school's around. The blacktop, we might be able to do a little bit of that, like down by the technology side and things of that. Those areas, we are gonna address those before school's out. But we'll try to do as quickly and as efficiently as we can, given that we don't wanna be, you know, in August doing some of these projects when the kids are coming back to school.
So there's eighty-two hundred dollars in here for tennis court sidewalks?
Yeah, we had, the school asked us to extend the sidewalks where the bleachers are at because parents wanted to go down and watch their children playing on the course that they're at. And it stops right at that second bleacher and there's no, it's all grass. And they want us to extend that out to the back of the tennis court so that they can walk on a sidewalk back there where their children are playing and take pictures.
That doesn't have anything to do with the building?
It's on opposite of the courts, three through six. And we looked at trying to put a six-foot sidewalk on that back side. So if your child is playing down there, you've actually got somewhere to stand besides the mother for grains.
On a side note, I've received several compliments on the parking, extended parking over by the ballfields.
Yeah, the sidewalk turned out nicely too. We're getting ready to fill that in on the sides.
Yeah, that's been well received. Yeah, lots of compliments about the parking lots, I mean, the parking spaces.
Yeah, it was a good decision. And luckily, we did it when we did.
Are we going through each one, we're gonna go through each one of these or how do you like want to proceed?
Well, do you have any questions? Do you wanna go through each one of them? What do you, or do you wanna just, whatever suits y'all, sign with me?
Well, yeah, any item in the general fund, you know, I'm a little skeptic of doing anything right now in the general fund. And we've got a hundred and seventy thousand coming out in general is the recommendation for general fund?
Yes.
And if you want more time to discuss that, that could be part of our work session. We could approve tonight all categories except for general fund, is a suggestion.
I don't know how much we have left in capital outlay after the decisions we made, but Alicia might be able to factor that, if there's any room in there, we can move some over.
So based on the tennis bathroom and then Billy just saying that the cost went up, he probably got thirty thousand left.
So we can move thirty of that over to capital. Now, the right column there I put is optional because some of the requests at Phoenix Academy and preschool, given the tentativeness of our facilities decisions, I put in that right column and didn't factor those into anything. And furniture requests I put over there, I had a couple of schools asking for furniture. I don't know how appropriate or inappropriate it is during a summer maintenance project to ask for furniture, but I wanted you to know that those buildings were asking for new furniture.
Is that in the optional category?
It's over in the right side category that's not factored into the other categories that are listed on that spreadsheet.
Is that not one they usually ask for?
I'm sorry.
Isn't that one they usually ask for?
They have in the past. You know, it's just really high-ticket items that, you know, I don't know any other way to pay for those other than through general fund or capital outlay and both are pretty tentative right now.
How bad is the roof at the fieldhouse at Campbell?
We go through a tarp about every six weeks.
I'm sorry?
We have to put a new tarp on it about every six weeks.
There's a tarp on it?
Yeah, I've been here eighteen years and it was on the same roof that was on it when I started.
But the field looks good. We reseeded the field.
It does look really nice. Mr. Carmichael and Mr. Igo are really proud of that.
They are, they should be.
I need to go up there and take a look at it.
Yeah, you'd be impressed.
That bluegrass is coming up nice.
Is it? Has that ever been replaced? I mean, as far as I know, I mean, I don't recall, but has it?
No, not that I'm aware of.
I know you got listed as optional and it's what, their fifth highest request, is that?
Yeah, I, you know, in my time it hasn't and I don't know, I just don't recollect if it ever has.
Is that something we can move to capital outlay?
I think so, yeah.
I know you get thirty thousand.
Which item is that, Mr. Tovling?
It's the roof replacement on the fieldhouse under Campbell. Does it require BG? You got a little note in it that will it require? Well, I guess not. Not now? Okay, answer my own question, okay.
I'm looking at the preschool and it says resurface interior ramps.
That would be major.
Can, I mean, is it one of those things if we don't address it, it's gonna get worse?
No, if you remodel the building, you'll have to address it because it's not in compliance with ABA code. But you know the ramps?
The interior ramps.
Yeah, I mean, you talk about a major project, that would be a major project.
Is that them hills, is that what y'all are talking about? They're not hills, they're huge.
Or is it a height, is it currently a height or a?
They're in interior, ramps going down the hallways.
When you were little, it was fun.
You know how steep those hallways go down?
Yes.
That's what they're talking about, those ramps.
They don't meet today's ABA compliance.
Okay.
You have too much fall.
Okay, I got you.
If you remodel that building, you'd have to fix those ramps. But if you don't remodel it, then you're not required to.
I follow you, thank you.
Donna, what happened with the playground at Baker? I know we went back and forth over the years of getting him playground equipment and all that and then.
Well, actually, we took playground equipment from Trapp.
Did I miss it, the jewelry discussing?
I just said I'm glad Mr. Mount fluffed already.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he would be right up here next to me. And we actually took playground equipment from Trapp and Poly View before we sold it and that's what we use for Baker.
So he actually is really unique because.
Absolutely, I mean, we mulch it every year. Every time I go out there, kids are out it.
Oh, I know, well, it seems like it keeps getting less and less. Like I guess you all are having to pull some more off and.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
There's always a huge line of everybody wanting to get on.
We're down to one side.
I found some stuff on Marketplace for him the other day, I'm gonna drop it off, I'm kidding.
I was really falling for it too, I was like, is she serious?
I'm sure some of that equipment he has out there was used by people our age.
Yeah, that's what I'm kinda wondering because I mean, yeah, I've been here for a while and, yeah, so he got it back then.
But it's still functional and he still has a group of kids that use it all the time.
Yeah, I mean, is it still like legal?
Yeah, I mean, as long as you.
Because I know some of the stuff we played on.
As long as you maintain the mulch levels and the fire zones and, yeah, I mean, it's legal.
Is insurance gonna cover us?
Yeah, it's legal.
Cover your gussey.
I don't see anything.
Becky, sorry.
I don't see anything under the ATC grant column?
ATC grant column, there's not. Not that I recall putting under, we put anything under ATC.
No, we did not get a list from him at this time.
It has to be kind of specific to their program and if, you know, if we were talking about landscaping or something along that. But there was really nothing on their list that would fit under that state grant.
Do we wanna approve this partially and like remove the general fund? Talk about some of it in the work session?
Yeah, I would go with that. I would like to see the twenty thousand dollars for the fieldhouse moved over to capital outlay. It'd all change.
We could do that.
Make a motion to approve the summer facility project list, including the maintenance ESER, Safe School, Capital Outlay Fund, minus the general fund, including moving the twenty thousand dollar optional for Campbell for the fieldhouse under the capital outlay column.
I'll second that. All those in favor? All those, motion carries.
Can I ask just a clarification of what's been approved? I'm not sure what.
Approved everything except the general fund column?
So nothing in the general fund has been approved, other than moving the roof over to capital outlay?
Correct.
You're gonna discuss that at the work session?
We're going to discuss the general fund column in the work session.
Okay.
Good?
Yeah, yeah, good. You guys are the bosses.
Okay. I would like to call a ten-minute recess. So, ten-minute recess, we'll see you back here at eight thirty-three. No, he was. I was taking everybody's house key and I can't keep up with one and so I'm taking all his house keys and he's tracking down. Student Learning and Instructional Services, consider action and discussion of employment of teachers with emergency certification for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Dr. Parrish?
Thank you. I think this is a formality just for being proactive in the event that we have a teacher shortage next year. So just requesting a board order if we have to emergency certify anyone next year.
Any questions?
I'll make the motion to approve employment of teachers with emergency certification for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
I'll second. I'll second. All those in favor?
I, yeah.
Okay.
I swallowed that gum.
Four to zero. Ashley will hopefully lift. Thank you, Ms. Dr. Parrish.
Don't worry, you don't have to inhale it or nothing. No, it'll just let me die.
Are you okay?
I'm good now. It's all good. Keep going, Megan. Keep rolling.
Okay, number twelve. Consider action and discussion of a gifted and talented education teacher job description. Ms. Bonfield.
All right, um, so what we have before you is a gifted, talented job description. Um, right now, currently in our district, we have one teacher that services our gifted, talented population. Um, through our consolidated monitoring, um, visit that we had with KDE, this kind of came out in their findings, is that we needed to have another gifted, talented teacher for our district. Because we do have over a hundred students, we want to make sure, um, that we increase the capacity and that we elevate that program. And currently, we have one teacher that services five schools. Um, and so this would actually allow us to have two. Um, this actual job description has an extended days, which part of that is there's certain documents that have to be uploaded to KDE. This person would also, um, work with our gifted, talented students as well as teachers, especially at RDC and GRC, in making sure we're meeting the needs of those students, um, that are identified.
So, if we already have one, why are we looking at a new job classification?
So, currently, the one that we have, and I don't know if Dr. Parrish may want to, um, about the job, uh, well, I know we've talked about it. It is technically right now under an itinerant teacher. It is not a gifted, talented. We do not have a job description for a gifted, talented teacher in Clark County. Um, the current teacher that we have in that position is actually hired under an itinerant teacher position with a gifted, talented endorsement. So, we still are, are fine under that. Um, but that's why we just, we did not have a gifted, talented job description. That's why I wanted to bring that before you all.
So, will this other person now be, can, be under this classification?
I don't know how. That would, that would actually work. Okay, yes.
That's not the intent. The intent is one teacher will, say, the teacher, and if she's interested, she's welcome to apply, but we don't need two people working extended days.
Right.
One person working extended days can make sure, like, the identification, the letters, all of the prep work is done so that, uh, I mean, I'm sure those, that other teacher would be happy to have extended days as well. But the intent is for one person to have extended days, um, so that they can take care of all of the, the identification paperwork, reporting that needs to be done and still deliver services.
Is it that one other per, I didn't mean to interrupt, but isn't that person now that's doing this, doing that job?
They are, but in our consolidated audit, we are lacking in being able to properly identify students, and we don't have the capacity to serve all of them. So, she has a five-day-a-week schedule and can only get to the four elementary schools in Baker. So, we have students that are in GT that are at RDC and GRC. And so, the identification part, um, we have not, we've not been doing that because of the workload that's there, but we also are not delivering services for RDC and GRC. So, again, if you want both teachers to be under that model, uh, that's fine. I just don't want you to feel like the intent was for both teachers to be under that model. And the other, uh, job description doesn't specify that they have to have a GT endorsement. We just want to make sure that we don't get in a situation where they're, that we're hiring a position and it becomes emergency because they don't have the GT endorsement. We want to make sure that the person hired has the GT endorsement.
So, the person that's in the district now, who do they report to today?
Um, they report technically to Ms. Bonfield, but they're assigned to schools. So, they go to, you know, say, Strode on Mondays and the school on Tuesdays. And they have got a schedule where they see students and then.
They have to do their gifted service plans. They have to, you know, so she has to meet with school, um, committees to discuss our students. Um, we have to get parent identification, you know, parent feedback on that. It is a lot for that one teacher, for those five kids, because she is meeting as well as trying to meet the needs in the classroom as well with those students. So, that's why we wanted to bring that.
So, will this one be in the classroom at all?
Yes. Yes.
And when are you looking to hire this person?
Before July one, just for next year.
So, will this one be for, what'd you say, Baker in middle school?
It would primarily, this person would work with our, right now, um, the teacher that we have now works with Baker. So, primarily, this person would work with RDC and GRC and those teachers that service our gifted, talented students.
And how does that fit into, into our staffing allocations? Because that's a hard pill to swallow.
It is. It is.
Very hard.
The staffing allocation, again, it's hard to talk about because we are cutting positions, we're cutting staff. But our staffing formula has not been properly aligned with the enrollment in years past.
I understand.
And we got really heavy in certain departments because things like this weren't technically brought before the board. They were just, they were just created and posted. You all didn't have a say in that because they were using federal dollars. That's not how we should have been doing it. We should have always been bringing positions to the board for these hard conversations and then getting approval on how those positions are gonna end up getting posted and approved and paid. So, part of the staffing situation that we're in is we have a lot of positions that got posted and hired that you, boards before you didn't have any say in. And so, the positions that we have tried to align with our staffing formula, while we are cutting somewhere in order to have better equitable staffing in other places, like EL was not on this, uh, agenda, but EL is gonna be something that we're gonna need to talk about because we heard about that in our focus groups and we also discussed that in the consolidated audit. But in order to have staffing in other places where it's needed, we have to get our alignment straightened out. And again, I know it's hard and you all have heard that our, you know, that they don't like losing staff. Principals don't like losing staff. Teachers don't like losing colleagues. They don't, they don't want to be the one that's, that's getting cut either. But we have a very generous staffing formula in Clark County, and we need that to be more aligned and equitable to meet the needs of students. And when we have one GT teacher that serves a hundred and twenty-some students and we're not meeting that need, we have, we need to be able to, we need to be able to serve those students.
Under the education experience, um, doesn't seem like there's much there. Just five years of teaching experience. Shouldn't it be a little more stringent on, on their speciality or for gifted and talent, you know, for, for gifted teaching than just five years of teaching experience?
Well, you could have a brand-new teacher that graduates and has a degree in mathematics and they go ahead and get their GT endorsement right away. Um, so if that's something that you, that you want more teaching experience, you know, that's definitely something that we consider, but your endorsement can be activated, you know, while you're finishing up your bachelor's degree.
I'm, I'm with Sheri on this. I, I, this is a very hard pill to swallow. I'm not understanding. I mean, I, I even got on today and looked and everybody around us is begging for teachers. I, I see it everywhere and we're talking about cutting teachers. And then I see positions like this and this is hard for me to just be like, okay. And even for the teacher that's in this position right now, and then, I don't know, the whole thing just, it, it just looks bad to me. I'm just struggling with this one.
That we are not serving a group of students and we've ident, that's been identified to us in a consolidated monitoring from the state.
I understand that that looks bad.
And we're trying to meet that need.
But it also looks bad that we're taking teachers out of classrooms with a whole lot of students and making the classroom larger. I mean, I'm just being real. You know, I have kids. I'm invested in this district. I have kids that are gonna be in those classrooms. Yeah, I'm not, that's... And so, yeah, that is very concerning. And I mean, this is not new. We talked about this at the last meeting and, you know, I wasn't here for the first staffing allocation. You guys had to handle that, but, yeah. I, and, and I hear what you're saying about previous boards, but I even have a hard time with that because of certain people that sit on this board that I've worked with that really had a hard time with overstaffing at central office and not inside the classroom. I heard it a hundred times sitting in here and I know you know exactly who I'm talking about. Um, she was very, very cautious of that. So, I don't know how we've gotten that position either. Because, um, she drew a lot of attention to that. So, I'm, I'm just really concerned about seeing things like this. I'm concerned about cutting staff. I'm concerned about where we're heading. A, and I, I would not be doing any justice for my district or anybody if I just sat here and didn't say anything. So... It's nothing personal. I, 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 you know, like I told you with the other positions, I understand we need these positions. I get it. But I also get that, you know, we're coming out of kids being out of school and, you know, I'm hearing from everybody, not principals, everybody, parents, teachers, all hands on deck. We need people. We need bodies. These kids need people in the classrooms. The more, the better. And I mean, I'm talking to people in other districts and they're like, we've, we've got to have staff. We need staff. And we're talking about cutting staff. And they're gonna take our staff. They're waiting. As soon as we release them, they're gonna grab them up. So, we're not gonna get them back. And that scares me.
Well, and I think that work session that we had really opened my, personally, I don't want to speak for anyone, done, on the magnitude, I knew, you know, there was some, there was some concern, but, I mean, every group we've talked to, every group in that work session said the same thing. That, you know, we, we're not gonna be able to function. Well, there was, there was two things that was really, um, that was really opening. First of all, teachers, first thing they have to do is, is, what they've been doing is, um, handling the emotional aspect of their kids before they can even teach the kids. Okay? So, in order to do that, we're taking resources away from them. So, they're gonna be spending more times doing that instead of teaching. So, I, you know, that was, that was, that was pretty concerning in, in the, in those work sessions. And, and, and adding, you know, another position here at the, I don't know if they're gonna report here in central office, they're gonna position here at central office, or, you know, what they're gonna do. It sounds like they're gonna, you know, report directly to Ms. Bonfield. Um, then I'm not, you know, are they gonna be reporting here? I guess they're not gonna be in the classroom because it sounded like it's more of administrative. What you mentioned, they're gonna be doing reports and doing stuff like that. We need teachers in classroom, not here.
And they will be in the classroom on a schedule like the elementary schedule. But we are also, in that consolidated audit, we were also not properly identifying students. So, then there's reporting and paperwork that goes with that, which is what the extended days can help with, to make sure that we have those things ahead of time, ready to go so that when school starts, we can get the letters generated and have those out while we're also continuing the services. And if this is something that you all don't feel comfortable with right now, I understand that too, but it's not a central office position. It's a position that's gonna be in the schools. Um, and we, we have one teacher already, again, that serves, but she's, she comes, I may see her here once every two months. Um, you know, it, it's not a position that's gonna be here. I don't, I don't see, uh, Kelly and Matt very often. I, I might run into them once a week, twice a week when they're here for a meeting and doing things because they're out in buildings. They're here on Mondays for base team and then usually I get to interact with them another time. But our central office staff is not, um, at central office like they used to be either. We, we have changed the way we deliver support to, to schools. Um, and we still have a lot of things that we, you know, that we need to do and get better, but this is not one of, one of those positions. But again, if it's, it's not something you feel comfortable with right now, I understand that too. Uh, this is as a result of the consolidated audit.
I have two questions. And the consolidated audit, is there a list of recommendations? I know this is a recommendation from that. Is there a list of that stuff that can be shared with us as, as a board?
We, we don't have, we have the tentative finding or tentative reports right now that they're sending back to us as they write them, but I think it is, we're supposed to get them back the beginning of June is when we're supposed to get the actual final report from all of our, um, programs.
Um.
Yeah, I've got tentative, you know, but it's more of conversations. They really haven't written up a plan or anything right now. Yeah.
And what they call exit interviews?
Yeah.
And then they go through what they're seeing as, you know, issues or errors and either programming, delivery of services, um, use of budgets, you know, making sure all those things are better. They did enter a lot of interviews with principals, with teachers.
Well, I mean, again, the fault of what Megan said, don't lose your train of thought there. I don't want to mess you up, but I mean, how many more of these are gonna come to us as we're waiting on that to come through?
Well, that was my, kind of in line with my next question. If we vote this no, if we vote this down.
Or table it?
Or, I think we would probably, what if we tabled it until we got the list and saw what the whole list looked like and, you know, the report as a whole, I'm a, I'm very much in agreement with the three of you on the current situations and feel very similar. Um, but I do know that this consolidated audit was a big deal and I would be interested to see the supporting documents that came with this suggestion and any additional recommendations. And I just, if we vote no, I mean, is it harder to, to bring it back? Would it be, would we be better off to table this until July or something?
I'm not comfortable voting on it tonight. I, I won't vote on it tonight. It will be a no or we'll table it when, for me.
I, I mean, I do think we're probably in an academic crisis and it's being really conservative about it. I don't think anybody really knows the extent of what we're facing, but we do know it's pretty dire. Um, that's just my opinion.
Um, I agree. And, uh, so whichever the majority of the board, I mean, if you want to table it or we can take a vote, I'm, I'm with it either way.
Even if you table it, we're gonna take a vote.
Um, so you, when, when does the report come out from the consolidated audit?
I know we get the final report. It'll be the first or second week of June. I don't know an exact date because there were nine different programs.
I just couldn't remember. I was flipping June and July in my head and I.
Yeah.
I didn't know which one you said.
So, once they all come together, then we'll get the final report.
Um, I think it probably would be a good idea to maybe review this report, just considering everything that's going on.
I definitely would love to see it.
In a work session and maybe like we, when it, after that's released, maybe consider scheduling one in June or July. But I'm gonna make a motion to table, um, item number twelve. All those in favor? Um, motion carries four to zero.
Do we need to decide when we're gonna table it? Doesn't it need to have like, we're table on it, but it has to, don't we need to say when we're tableing?
I thought you said July.
Till July?
Yeah, till, because that, if that report comes out the first or second week of June.
I missed that.
No, it's okay. And then.
And if I get it earlier, we can, but.
But if we have the June meeting, we can skip.
I'm gonna work this out for June anyway, and I have superintendent's report too. It might be something that we can talk about there. But EL would be another area that has, has surfaced concerns about staffing.
I think, from what I gather, it would probably do us all some good to study it in a work session. Okay. Number thirteen, consider action and discussion of academic suite update. Ms. Bonfield and Ms. Pithin.
Okay, I'm gonna let Ms. Pithin start out on this. Hello, I'm, good evening. I'm Ms. Pithin. Um, I want to give a little report about our lead, um, PLC that we had on April fourteenth. So, remember that our lead PLC is where all of our administrators and our base team comes together monthly to discuss certain academic and different, uh, supports. We shifted our lead focus from behavior to academic supports this month. During that PLC, we discussed layering the continuum of academic supports to ensure academic growth and support for our students. Within our department, we've been aligning our academic framework to guide the instruction. You can go on to the next slide, please. And this is where we have evolved into our framework for instruction, where it interconnects all of our academic components. Um, they're listed on here, the Danielson's Framework for Teaching, which guides our, um, Certified Evaluation Plan. We have our PLC protocols, which guides our, guides our teachers and our professional learning communities. We have a balanced assessment system, which I'll talk about in a few moments. And then we also, uh, used a curriculum guide from KDE to model our work. So, we're trying to align our curriculum department, our academic focus within our district. So, on the next slide is where we have our guiding question that we are using to center our work for our district, our equitable opportunities and meaningful experiences at the center of learning for all students. So, we're using that in all that we do. It is recurring throughout all of our guidance and it will remain at the center and the heart of all of our work within our district. So, everything, every guidance that we look at, um, every academic piece and focus, we are using. So everything, every guidance that we look at, um, every academic piece and focus, we are using that guiding question to guide our work and center our work. The next slide is just a sample, I think you went backwards, we go the other way. Um, it's just a sample of the framework for instruction, it's just a piece of it so that you all could see that. But keeping in mind that all of this is a rough draft, a work in progress, we took all of this to our lead team so that we can gather input from our administrators and our base team to further guide our work, and then that will guide our teachers and also our, in our classrooms. So the Balanced Assessment System is the next slide that you'll see. Um, we're trying to align all of our assessments within the district, all of our assessments are used to.
I'm sorry, I just wanna point out, we've, we've not had an instructional framework in Clark County schools. So this is something that the team has worked really hard with, uh, they've consulted with other districts, uh, they've worked with our literacy consultant, Julie and Kelly have let a lot of this, have got input from, um, from other staff, again, uh, back to the lead, but I don't, I just wanna point out the gravity of that because we did not have an instructional framework before, so a lot of work in a short amount of time has gone into that.
Yeah, and to kind of, um, add to that, what we've done is we've taken the evaluation system and we've combined that into our P L C protocol, which are things that we all talk about, what should be happening in the classroom and what should be happening as we talk about data, how are our students performing, what instruction are we going to use to make sure we meet those needs. And our building leaders have been incredible because they, they've actually come together and helped us as far as develop questions. So it's becoming more of a coaching guide for our teachers, rather than more of an evaluation kind of thing. So those questions are able to help us provide those conversations to maybe then for our teachers to say, hey, I need help in this, this is where I, you know, and then that way we can gather our professional development or whatever we need for them, so that they're successful. So it's kind of taken three different things and putting them and combining them together into one document.
And part of one of those documents is the Balanced Assessment System. We're looking at all of our assessments within our district, from diagnostic to our state benchmark testing, so that we can guide and inform our instruction across the district. Um, we're looking at assessment that is used for learning versus assessment used of learning. So we're talking, having those discussions with our administrators, um, we will have those discussions with our teachers and just trying to drive the focus of our district academically and keeping that guiding question at the heart of our district to improve all student work and achievement.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the next thing, we have our STAR assessments for fall, winter, and spring, so we just finished, um, those assessments at all schools. So if you'll go on, um, our elementary, um, you'll see each grade there. Um, and basically this just shows us our, um, novice apprentice proficient and distinguished, so our distinct, distinguished is our, our greenish color up there. Um, so you can kind of see the growth and where we're at as far as reducing novice. Um, math is still a concern, so as you look at these scores, you will see that math is something that we really need to work on, um, as well as literacy, and that's, using these scores, again, um, STAR especially at the elementary level is a little bit harder. We did the early literacy for our kindergartners, so kindergarten only took this test two times. Um, and then we've got first, first and second grade, um, first grader, some of them took the early literacy and then they transitioned over to STAR reading. So you'll kind of see those scores as well. Um, but you can kind of see there, um, it's broken apart into reading and math, you can go on to the next one.
So I have a question on the rea-, the reading looks more concerning than the math, so you said math is more concerning in elementary. So what am I missing on the graph? Because it looks like there's been progress made in reading from the fall.
I'm sorry, yes, it is. I'm sorry, did I say math? Literacy is still our concern. I'm sorry, did I say math? No, literacy is our concern still. And, um, you know, and I think that's one of the things, as we're developing the Cardinal Connections Academy for two weeks, we are really going to focus a lot on literacy.
Cuz it looks like there's been, you know, pretty good progression, but still.
No, liter-, yeah.
They're still weak.
And I will say, you know, it's hard because this is done by percentiles. If you look at scaled score, our scaled score on our students, there's been significant growth. You know, so part of coming off of the pandemic and really thinking about and getting that going, you know, we, we had students, of course, with two years worth of learning gaps, so just closing that gap, we have seen tremendous growth. Um, that I think sometimes it's hard to put in a, in a graph or to communicate, um, really truly that we are closing the gap. Um, our teachers are working super hard. You know, one of the things I really noticed is if you look at early literacy for kindergarten, you know, that, that you're really gonna notice that, you know, that effective instruction and, and really that targeted, targeted intervention, we have a lot of kids reading on grade level, and that's exciting.
I was just, that's what I was just looking at.
Yeah.
Is that, you, I mean, obviously in the fall, coming in, you know, in the fall of last year, coming off of COVID. So, uh, you count, do you account for that large percentage in the fall, really because of the, the break?
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, you've gotta think at that age, they're, they're trying to figure out just school.
Right.
Right, you know. We talk about second graders, Ms. Bonfield pointed out, like, second graders, they haven't been in, they weren't in school since kindergarten. And so your early literacy foundations are happening in kindergarten for, you know, it's like you're going from reading to learn, or learning to read, and then transitioning to.
Reading to learn.
Uh, reading to learn. Um, I'd like to share real quickly, she had me, um, wa-, go, we have Fanta's and Pennell, and so she wanted me to go look at, uh, classrooms, so I picked, um, she, she didn't tell me which ones, but I picked, um, Shear, and I went into two first grade classrooms at Shear. And what was really neat is that you went in and you saw them talking about diagrams and this large group, um, instruction. And I, well, I left there after about fifteen minutes, and she was getting ready to transition into a related text that they had already been exposed to, but she had told the kids that they were gonna do something new with it. And so I was like, man, I'd like to, you know, stay and see this, but I'll go into the next classroom, and that classroom, they were so lasered on their instructional design that that teacher was starting with the text, you know, had just wrapped up diagrams and was starting with the text. So they, the, the P L C structures, um, that's what I learned from that, is that our P L C structures are working because the teachers are so calibrated. They were at least in, in that setting that I saw, which was really powerful to see. Other school, you know, other schools, uh, upper grades you can walk into, and you see a lot of similar things about that foundation at, at early, at the early learning side of it came through to is, is really important, and so I was impressed to see the, the calibration.
One of the things I do wanna point out to you is, um, at R D C, so they are missing their fall scores on this. So you'll notice, um, the winter and spring is what is being communicated. Our fall scores are not on there due to a data upload error with STAR, with Renaissance. So when we purchased STAR, what happened is they actually put them into a different grade than what they were. And so when we uploaded it, our seventh graders were showing us sixth graders, and so that's why the percentile. So we do still have their scaled score, which is what we use and what the teachers have been using, but I didn't wanna present that on here because it really wasn't an accurate representation, um, for them. But you can see the winter and the spring scores for them as well.
So every other schools, all the other schools, looks like they're making progression, and R D C on reading, I'm looking at reading.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'm looking at math now.
Yeah.
It's not, uh, they actually went the other way.
They did.
Is there a reason for that? Or, I don't, I don't wanna assume anything, but.
Right, you know, I don't wanna, yeah, I'd, I did.
And I know this is just two snapshots too, so. That's concerning when you're seeing the other schools progress and that school's not.
It is.
It's my understanding that R D C, um, did not traditionally take what we used to have was MAP.
Right.
And so this is new for them, so this, it could be part of the structure, uh, it could be instructional things that we need to address, but all of the other schools are used to the process, and, and they were not. So like, how they schedule testing, uh, uh, to do STAR testing, but it was my understanding that they never participated in MAP before. Um, and Mr. Howard was fully on board with, no, we want this to be district-wide. So I think a lot of it too is this first year for them is working out, uh, processes on how teachers respond to this. New for them, where all the other schools, you kind of take for granted, but they, um, I don't say know how to do it, it's not that R D C doesn't know how to do testing. But it's, it's, it's new.
Yeah. Is it new at G R C too?
It is.
For, yeah, they, they didn't do MAP either, it kind of stopped it.
Normally, they would, some of the freshmen used to take MAP, um, but as far as school-wide, no. As far as collectively as an entire building, it's new for R D C and G R C.
Yeah, reading's concerning at G R C.
Yeah.
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 Reading's been concerned here for a while.
I mean, if you don't have. Reading and comprehension skills.
That's it, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So we don't need to do anything, make a motion?
You can approve her, uh, report.
Oh.
I'm sorry, the, she mentioned the P D plan and the Cardinal Academy, we're getting ready to release that. And then the N T I plan one, we'll be finalizing it, that's what we used before when we weren't in N T I day. So that's just a formality of letting you know that we're sending that to K D E.
And that is, I think, that, those reports are uploaded in your packets, the N T I and P D plan that will go to K D E.
Um, have teachers been consulted on P D and what they like, or is this something that's just?
No, so our teachers have actually been given, um, we've actually surveyed our teachers, we also have teachers that will be presenting at our Cardinal Connections Academy. We've actually had other districts even reach, reach out and wanna come as well to our sessions. So we're actually using teacher leaders to present some of our professional development at that. So we've, we've been able to ask them what their specialty, as we've, um, consulted with building leaders as well, um, to be able to provide that P D.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, I make a motion to accept Ms. Bonfield's, um, presentation of the academic suite update. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, number fourteen, consider action and discussion of memorandum agreement between Morehead State University and Clark County Board of Education for dual credit program for students at G, George Rogers Clark High School for twenty-two, twenty-three.
There's really no discussion, um, that's part of the work that we've been doing to expand dual credit opportunities, which already existed with M S U. So we constantly, um, talk with them on what other things, anytime they can give us more, and those are free. We get those provided free for, for our students that qualif-, or not qualify, but want to take dual credit, uh, through M S U.
Just really a housekeeping.
Yeah, really a housekeeping.
Any questions? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion to consider item number fourteen.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Mo-, motion carries four to zero. Number fifteen, consider action and discussion of memorandum agreement between Achieving Recovery Together and Clark County Board Board of Education for an art program for the twenty-two, twenty-three year.
So they art, um, has been coming into, uh, Phoenix and doing some, um, like mental health work, uh, some activities. Uh, Ms. Bush actually, uh, connected, connected them, uh, Ms. Hoffman has been using them also. And so they've approached us to really expand that partnership where we can work more closely with our F R Cs and our counselors. Um, you know, that, in the event that, uh, there's a student and or a family member that is dealing with addiction, that we can, uh, provide them with other resources. And so, um, I've had Ms. McCoy look at the M O U, we made sure that it was, even though it would have happened, uh, with the, um, consent, uh, we wanted that in there specifically. So if you're gonna make a refer-, referral, our staff would have been calling the parent to make sure that they knew that to begin with, not just sending the information over to art, but that is now clarified in the M O U. Um, and we would like to, um, have that available for, um, our counselors and our F R Cs to be able to make referrals, uh, to help families.
There's nothing in our packet on that.
I was gonna say, Ms. Nance, we have.
Oh, wait a minute.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was like, Ms. Nance, I saw it three times.
Well, there's, I went to, I went past it, there's another fifteen, so that's.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. McCoy, you reviewed it.
I did. My initial concern was that the parent consent to the referral just because the confidential nature of a referral being made of this nature, um, and I think as long as that's done and that's, that's outlined in the memorandum of understanding, um, then I, I don't have any concerns at that point. I think it is important that parental consent be given before the referral is made.
Any question or discussions? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to per item number fifteen.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, all is in favor? Um, motion carries four to zero. Um, finance update. Number sixteen, consider action and discussion of monthly C C P S financial update. Ms. Dorsey Hedges is now back to Alicia.
I am back.
Welcome.
Um, Ms. Ellis is glad to be back. Um, so in your financial update, which we started a couple months ago, um, you will see a general fund summary comparison of our receipts and our expenditures. And you can see, um, our revenue collection compared to this time last year is down one percent. Um, a lot of that has to do percentage-wise, due to the budget last year compared to the budget this year. We were at a budget of only forty-nine million last year, and we're at fifty-two million this year. We're actually up in actual revenue collections of one point seven million from last year. So our revenue collection, as the actual dollar amount, is actually more than last year. It's just that percentage, when you compare it to a smaller budget, looks different. Um, and then our expenditures are up from last year, um, two percent. It's actually a one point four million increase from this time last year, but also keep in mind, we're in full session this year, full operations, we were not at this time last year. Costs are much more expensive this year, we spent a lot more money on items, um, cuz that cost has been driven up in the, in our, it's kind of hard to swallow, but that's everything we talk about right now. Um, so the next slide is talking about our tax collections, and Sheriff Purdue actually sent an email to Dr. McComas just kind of going over what his office has done. And they have actually collected around thirty million dollars in total taxes. They are at ninety-nine point three percent of what he, as his sheriff office is expected to collect for the county. Um, and they've actually collected over two hundred thousand dollars in delinquent taxes this year. So that's, you know, a big, huge kudos to the sheriff's department on what has been collected in taxes. And that in turn, as you look at our numbers of what we have recorded in revenues against what we budgeted, we're actually sitting at ninety-nine percent collection of our property tax dollars, which is, we're, you know. So by the end of the year, we're gonna meet that or probably have a little bit more in actual tax collections than we estimated, cuz we estimate kind of conservatively to make sure that we, um, do collect and budget, so that we're not under budget. Um, franchise tax, our property, that, um, public service company taxes, they're up from this time last year. I don't know if you all remember, but from last year, we had a, there was a dispute going on from the state level, and we had called and we were trying to get information on that last year, and that's why we came in short that one year. Do you remember when we were under budget on our property taxes? Do you remember that discussion a couple years ago? That's because those franchise taxes, those companies can dispute that at the state level. This is passed straight through from the state level, and so he's just collecting what the state's telling him, like, it gets filtered through the sheriff's office here, but it literally is dictated by the state, it's billed by the state, and they just pay it at the county clerk's office. Um, so some of those disputes have clearly been resolved and money is starting to roll in, cuz you see, we've got a fifteen percent increase in collections compared to what we have last year. Motor vehicle, it's up from last year. So everything looks like it's trending exactly as last year was, and we met our budgets last year, so we're still trending that we're gonna meet those budgets again this year, so that's fantastic news. Are there any questions on any of the supporting documentation that goes along with this?
Part of our financials.
So also in your consent items, um, this evening, you've got a KETS, um, offer. And KETS used to have two, used to have a total of three offers, but they have combined their second and third offers this year into one second offer, so this will be the final offer from KETS. So this will be the final offer from KETS, is my understanding. So that is the formality of approving and accepting. We always escrow that for the three years, the maximum amount allowed. So we just need your approval to send to the state that you will match that, and that's what funds our technology KETS budget.
Took off. Told you.
And while you're on, can, on consents. Goodness, is it contagious over there?
Everything's good.
Under consents, under the superintendent travel expenses, when you approve consents, we'll need to approve that with knowing that there's going to be a reimbursement from my travel to Lexington. That violated a policy I was not aware of. So when we approve twenty-six, if you, I mean, when we approve consents, you can approve with reimbursement from superintendent on item twenty-six. KASA, or whichever group it was that we were in Lexington with, they suggested that I stay there because we were doing the, what was it? Gosh, you all got state championship, sorry. And I'm glad I did, but technically it was not within forty miles of our district. So I will do a reimbursement to Ms. Ellis for that, when we do that approval.
Any questions?
No.
Motion?
That we discussed it? Is that what you want?
That you're approving the monthly financial update. That was advisement from KASBA at the conference that we went to from Mrs. McCoy.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll teach y'all. I will do. I make a motion to approve the monthly financial update.
I'll second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion carries. Okay, number seventeen, consider action and discussion of final school staffing allocation and budgets. Mrs. Stone.
So you received a new version of what you had seen in February that is now the final allocation document to what was the tentative.
Which is technically not final.
Yes, technically not final, even though that's how the language reads.
Adding layers back in.
So the big changes that you see from February is at the February, we have, as you know, established designated substitute teacher positions this year. And now all the schools got those positions given to them this year that we have allocated out of those ESER dollars. And on the tentative level, we were grant-based, we were pulling all grant-based funding positions back and saying that we were not going to fund those next year because that's typically what you do is you just non-renew a grant because you don't know if the grants are going to come in and we're evaluating our federal grants. So in evaluating that and sitting down with Dr. McComas and Mrs. Bonfield and looking at our ESER dollars, we did determine we can, in fact, still fund one DST position for all of the schools next year. So you'll see that added back in to each of the schools. And then you'll also see at the very bottom of every single spreadsheet for each of the school, they have put in requests because they each got portions of the ESER dollars that they're facilitating at the school level, that they're requesting to fund some positions out of those dollars that they were given to manage for the three-year term of the grant. So that's listed at all of those spreadsheets.
And Ms. Ellis actually added, after we reviewed this again yesterday when she came back, for example, on GRC. So the initial total is on the top. After we have been able to work with principals, then we have an adjusted total on the bottoms because they are now using their school allocated ESER dollars in funds to provide some of those positions back. And then we will do another calculation on enrollment, projected enrollment. And if our projected enrollment goes up, as you can tell, it's down across the board. If projected enrollment goes up for each school, then that could possibly make other adjustments.
How come when I look at Justice and I look at Shear, they have, Shear has less students but has more teachers?
It's when you look at the individual grade levels of how it calculates out for their enrollment per grade level and then the ratio, Shear, his numbers roll up. So when you do that point five in mathematical, you're looking at rolling up or rolling down when you hit that. So his all hit kind of the point five mark and rolled up, and Justice rolled down. So that's the big difference of what happened at the different grade levels, when we choose to roll to the nearest tenth.
Considering hers are like two point nine, two point nine.
She's got a three point. Let me get on Justice.
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong column, Alicia. Three point five, three point five.
Shoot.
That was her twenty-two allocation.
What column were we, oh.
Yeah, so in the required positions column, she's got a three point one and a three point three. Those both rolled down. Her two point nine, two point nine, two point eight, those all rolled up. But then when you look over at Shear, he's got every single one of his rolled up to the next whole number based on that tenth number, where she had a few that rolled down. So that's the difference in their staffing at that level of rolling up and rolling down that created the difference of the teachers. And that's something, as she said, as Dr. McComas just referenced to me and go, it's not really the final. We still have layers and we can look at things. And if that, that's something that can be looked at, especially when we're pulling new enrollment numbers, can make those roll differently for staffing. Oh, and I did miss saying, on Justice as well, we added, we added a teacher to her out of the ESER funds because that was part of our discussion when we were looking at the ESER dollars, that we did have enough funds to add a teacher back to the ESER. I apologize. I just took that.
I'm looking at the highlights.
Yeah.
So I'm not looking at the rolling up and rolling down. I was just looking at.
Right.
What you had.
And it does, when you look at just those two highlights, it does look very strange, but that is the reasoning. It's the, just the mathematical behind it.
But Ms. Ellis was concerned about that. We had that conversation yesterday.
Yes.
They, Justice did have one full position added back, even though it technically violated the rule of the rounding.
What's financial impact to the district if we don't approve the reduction?
Well, what was presented to you in the draft budget does include this reduction. So as you recall, when we were looking at that January draft budget, we had quite an excess amount of money, looking at incoming revenue and expenditures. And we were trying to create that and in reducing and getting our staffing allocation back in line with really where state recommendations are, is your current staff could have the potential to have raises. And that's only going to occur if we do get our staffing allocation more in line with what state recommendation is of numbers of positions so that you can create value in your salary tables. So basically, if you want to keep all of the people and not reduce, you're not going to have any kind of pot of money to increase salaries. We're going to stay where we're at salary-wise.
But we're not a hundred percent sure that we're going to be able to give a raise either.
That is part of the discussion that will be brought to you in May with the tentative budget of what salary percentage increases would look like with that excess revenue you have available to you that was presented in the draft, which we are firming up and making sure that that is a more accurate number. And we know from legislation, SEEK has gone up, which was not calculated in the draft budget. So that's going to show SEEK dollars increasing actually in your tentative budget, which is then increasing your monies available for raises. So I mean, there's pockets of money that legislation has put out for next year that is going to allow us to have more revenue next year than you were even projected at the draft level. And we are working with Dr. Shelton. He's going to help do a budget analysis with us too to help us, you know, look at those numbers and make sure we are on track for what legislation's put out, what we've budgeted, that we're firming that up, that it is a very good number to present to you for available dollars for raises. Because that is the intent, obviously. If you're reducing here, you want to help increase capacity in another manner. And that's rewarding your staff that you have with higher paid salaries. That's getting the positions that you need to serve the students that have been identified. So that's what we're working on in changing this model of how things look.
I would just be curious as to how much of a raise we were talking about with this staff. Because if you're going to add more work to them, I mean, a lot of times when we give raises to it, it ends up adding them in a different tax bracket, and then they end up not really seeing a lot of benefits from the raises either. And they're going to end up with more work. Just something out the.
Taxes are fun.
They are. That's what I'm saying. I mean, if we, we've taken away, we're adding more work, and then we're going to say, okay, well, we're going to give you a raise, but wait, now we put you in a new tax bracket, so really you're not going to make anything else. But we gave you more work.
This is time-sensitive, right? It's going to be.
We have, the SPDM councils have to be presented with a final staffing allocation per the KRS by May first. So, yes, as far as that goes. And they need those numbers to plan, you know, their class schedules and know how many teachers they have and all of that. So I mean, they have duties that they need to perform to make sure that next year starts in a timely fashion.
This is back when they were scheduling meetings, when I said it would be a bad idea to put meetings on the end of the month. This is the stuff you run into.
Um, I think.
Because it ties hands.
Yeah. I, I would like to see the staffing allocation be its own meeting, kind of like the budget.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how you're going to do it, but I mean, at this point, it doesn't look like anybody's very comfortable right now. And now you've got a budget due, and we're at the end of the month.
Well, if you approve this and at our May work session, doesn't mean that you can't add more staff back, if that's what you're interested in doing.
We could not approve it. We go back to the, the staffing we have today. And then in May session, we could take those away, couldn't we?
And you.
Positions? I mean, either way, correct?
We have to deliver letters by May fifteenth. And so we've already delivered letters based on tentative numbers that we had before. We can recall letters based on additions that are shown here. Or we recall all letters, and that's the decision that you all want to go with, going back to what we started with. And then we go through this process again more for next year.
Is it common practice to deliver the letters before the?
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, the staffing allocation is the final approvals made?
Districts do a lot of things in different manners, but a lot of districts deliver letters before, after the first approval, before spring break. That's the model that we followed. Other letters were delivered April twenty-second for like stipend reductions, those things that we needed to address.
Could we not use more ESER funds to retain some of these? Because when you look at our numbers and where we are on the graphs that Ms. Bonfield, Ms. Bithen gave us, we, our kids need help, and it looks like that's what that money's for, is so that we can use ESER money to help these children and then, and then see another year how far we've come. And by then, I know we've got, I know you mentioned Dr. Pearson, teachers retiring and leaving or changing.
You also have a bunch of kids that are out in homeschool and then that we're trying to get back in that could raise that. I mean, you know, that brings up funding as well, if we can reach those kids and bring them back in. What was it, over six hundred?
We were at six thirteen.
I mean, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
That could potentially come back into your buildings. If we have, I'm with, again, with Sherri on that. If we have the ESER funding, why would we not spend that money to keep staff and have.
Is that an option for us?
I serve at your pleasure, so if that's what you want to do, then we can move staff over to ESER. The schools have ESER monies. That's part of the process that we've gone back and forth with, that they've shift, they have reclaimed the positions that the general fund wasn't going to support, and they moved those to their ESER dollars. So some of that has occurred in this round.
How many did we move?
They're, they're in here at the bottom.
Listed on each sheet. That's what's at the bottom of the school sheet. It's what they've chosen to move to their ESER dollars.
This is, this is showing you that ten positions were reclaimed here so that we could have two additional DSTs, like at the high school, an at-risk mentor, one support secretary, six teaching positions, our ESER funds to be used. Do we have an updated budget of like where the ESER funding went?
That's something that can be provided in the May work session.
And what's the balance of the ESER funds available?
We could provide that.
Off the top of your head?
I do not. I'm sorry. I've been out for six weeks. I don't have all my numbers back in my head yet, so, but I could definitely.
That would be nice, nice to have.
We could get that together for you, for me.
And I do understand what you're saying about us being heavy. I do understand it. And I do appreciate what you're trying to do. I do, but I.
If there's a time we could afford to be heavy.
It's now.
It seems like it would be. I mean, we seem in pretty dire need of some academic intervention across the board.
Yes.
We need to follow structures. That's our, and I.
I understand. I do.
That's our biggest problem, is that we need to follow structures. We need to know grade level standards and teach them. We need to, the structures need to be that if you're struggling in math, I'm not going to come and get you out of math class to go give you hope. We're not currently following structures everywhere. And when we get those things in place, that is going to be our biggest catalyst for change. Our teachers are already starting to calibrate and work together. PLC structures are working. But, but we are heavy, and I'm not trying to sound insulting or disrespectful. Our teachers work hard. Our principals work hard. Our team here works hard. But when we, when we, when we start having issues, instead of looking at our structures all the time, we want more staff. And then we're pulling kids out of core content. So if we're struggling with math and literature, in math and reading, pulling them out of math and reading to give them help in math and reading, that doesn't align, that doesn't align with what they're doing in the classroom. And that's hard to say because I don't want to insult anyone. And we have a lot of good work going on out there.
This is why we've hired, though, those, these four or two additional, what, four total people at central office, is to make sure that we're following systems and doing things logically.
And we're working a continuum, like all of our elementary schools. You know, it's awesome to see those leaders come together, and they're starting to calibrate between schools, that horizontal alignment. And I'm not saying it didn't happen, but it happened in pockets. And I'm not saying it didn't happen, but it happened in pockets. And now it's like really happening. But if you don't feel comfortable with what the work that we have done on the staffing allocation, you, you know, give me direction, and we can go back and review that. If it's something that you approved tonight, it says final, but it doesn't mean it's set in stone. It means that, yes, you've approved it tonight, and that's what it is. But in two weeks, when we have the board meeting on May 10th, and there's something that you want added back in there, then we can recall letters after that.
I think at some point, I think the things that you're putting into place are great. And I think at some point, you've got to trust that your staff below is doing their jobs. And you've got principals in these buildings that are, you know, over top of the, and they should be, they should know, don't pull this, this should not be happening. You shouldn't be pulling this kid out of math if this kid needs math. What is...
We are working on that.
Right, that's what I'm saying. At some point...
It doesn't happen overnight.
I know, and that's exactly it. But I don't know that taking more staff away right now in this time is what we need. If it's not, more communication is where we need to go. And everybody get on the same page. And I think you're doing great programs with that. I don't want you to feel like we're just on a, what are you doing?
I understand your concern. I hear what you're saying. I believe in the work that we've done. But again, if you all have a different idea of what you want us to do, our team will go back and vet that. We will work with principals, and we will go through that.
Do you think we need an updated ESAR?
I wrote that down. I'll get that to you too.
ESAR, I'm just asking, to make it, I mean, this has to be, you know, we have to have our approval, they have to have it to work off of, to set schedules and stuff. So it sounds like it's a working document.
Well, my take is, after going through the roundtable discussions, that right now is not the time to take resources away from the teachers. Some point, or from the schools, some point, you know, if we're heavy, we need to make that decision. But just now coming, you know, a year, you know, a year away from being closed and emotional and behavior of the students is not, we don't need to be taking resources away. If we can, if we can use the ESAR funds to, and we have the ESAR funds to support that for another, for another, for another year. And I think there's attrition that will obviously take place as well, you know. So as you go forward, maybe some of these positions will go away on their own. And there was one other, one other point, as I was scrolling through here, and I just lost my train of thought. Oh, and the student population, we don't know how much we're coming back. We, you know, we have an estimate, but, you know, hopefully that estimate is low as a conservative, you know, conservative estimate. And that will go up, SEEK money's going up. So keeping the staff allocations the same, you know, I don't know what that does as far as ESAR dollars go. Do we have enough ESAR dollars to support that for another year?
That's, I mean, we have enough to support the ones that are in the staffing allocation right now based on the discussion that we've had. So that's, we're going to have to have a discussion before the May 10th work session, again, looking at our ESAR dollars to see and make a recommendation at that work session of how many positions you could add back to ESARS. I mean, that's going to have to be something that Dr. McComas and I look at. I could not name that off the top of my head right now.
So while I'm hearing you all feel uncomfortable with this, we need to have something formally approved so that we can present it to site base.
I would be more careful staying with what we had before. And then adding or doing, after we get a budget, then moving with it. But I think once you make that, I know you say we can change it, but once we approve what's here tonight, it's kind of saying, this is it. And I think you're going to send principals and staff into a tailspin.
I mean, we thought into just like some staffing allocation stuff, like in the middle. I mean, haven't we?
I'm sorry, what was?
It's been pieced out, nevermind, regarding my district.
Well, I mean, the meeting is set for the 10th. So please correct me if I misspeak, but we have till the 15th a recall letter. So if decisions are made at the 10th level that you all are wanting to add stuff back, because it's going to be a special called meeting, so my understanding is decisions can be made in that meeting. There is time to recall. We actually have, till June 30th.
It's a special called meeting. You either have special called meetings or you have regular meetings. And so we can use a special called meeting to do what we did, like as a work session. Or we can have a work session that still has items that will need to be approved. Yes, ma'am.
We can take a special board action and call it a special session.
I worry that if we go back to the original one, when you say original, you're talking about last August, what we started the school year with. Teachers have already been given those letters based on the tentative allocation. So to me, it would be, how do I say, more upsetting? But it's like, we don't need the yo-yo effect. Here's your letter, we're taking it back, and then we do this again. And it's like, oh, you get the letter again.
And I understand that too, but my fear is, is we're going to lose some really good teachers while we're waiting around until May 10th to do this. They're going to be looking for jobs.
They're going to have.
Yeah. I mean, we can't sit around, yeah, I mean, they've been handed this letter now. I would panic. I'm going to find a job. I mean, so, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but in my opinion, if we think that this is going to be fixed and we're not going to hand them the thing, then it needs to be retracted, and these people need to feel safe. Because we are going to lose these to surrounding districts that pay more, let's just be real, and can take our staff that we want, and good staff. We're going to lose good staff. And that's what worries me.
Just a general question in the room. If this isn't approved, what does this look, I mean, what does this look like? What do we say or...
I will issue an email to all principals tomorrow to say all letters have been recalled. And our budget stands as is from July of, you know, whatever the beginning of the school year.
Have you done, how many you have retiring versus that you know are retiring? Do you have a set number?
We know that information that comes to HR.
At the last meeting, I think it was 13. We're up to 18 now, but that's classified and certified. So it has increased since the last meeting that I brought you.
Thank you.
And so then you take that from how many, what's your number that, I don't...
Well, that gets, when a principal, when a principal looks at that, who's retiring, it's either a position that they can keep or it's not. And if they can keep it, then they're going to repost it because they, you know, say it's French, or say it's, you know, a fourth grade teacher or an algebra one teacher. And they have that in their allocation, and they know they need that many sections. Then that teacher might retire, but they're going to have to replace, they're still going to have to replace that position. Versus another, another area where it's heavy, where the numbers don't support, you know, a fourth grade class is really, we're seeing that at Baker. A fourth grade incoming class is going to be really low. So even though Mr. Mounts may have some fifth grade teachers that are retiring, he may choose to not replace those because he's going to have a lower enrollment for fourth grade. So it really depends on which grade level or content area that you're looking at. But that does, you know, to Mr. Talby and Ms. Ritchie's point, that does factor into the decisions that are made. So while they may have, I hate to say cuts, through this realignment, while they are losing positions based on that, some of them are going to be absorbed as retirements. But some of them may not. It might be that we're retiring, but I still have to have the position. Like I still have to make sure I have enough sections of Algebra II, or I still have to make sure I've got enough, you know, third grade teachers. So it really depends on the place that they're needed.
Are we flexible enough that if Baker didn't need it, that we could take that teacher and move it to RDC or...
If they have tenure, you know, so if they don't have tenure, they're not guaranteed that position. If they have tenure, then you can move folks around. But you also can move somebody around that has tenure, and the other school is already capped with the number of staff that they need. So it really is important to know, you know, so if you're wanting to recall this all back, then again, we will issue a statement to our principals, and they will issue that out to all staff, classified and certified. And then we will bring this back to May. But then that means you're going to then reissue possibly letters based on decisions that we will make in the May 10th board meeting. I don't know if I'm explaining that correctly. I mean, that's...
Saying all the, all the terminations or pink slips or whatever.
Could come back.
Yeah, and then like, we're like, okay, well, five of you, we were just joking.
So how many letters went out? I was counting around, I was going through here around 80. I don't use that.
I don't have the accurate, the right number. But, you know, lots, based on the staffing cuts that we've made. Those letters have gone out, stipend letter reduction letters have gone out, classified letters have gone out.
I was just adding up the ones in red at the bottom of each page. The total, total of non-renewal letters needed, is that the ones that went out?
The bottom number is the new number.
Yeah, the new number.
And so the original number would have went out.
How the original went out.
And then the bottom number could have, could be recalled. Or it could also be that they're going to get posted. And they want to, they want to, staff to reapply. Or they want to, you know, it could be that somebody moved, they took a, you know, that became part of their position. We've had two teachers that took jobs, like, you know, their husbands got jobs or they got jobs in, you know, say, Georgia. So that was part of their original number. And so even though they could have recalled that position, they're going to have to post it because there's no teacher to recall because they moved to, you know, Georgia.
Do you have a percentage, maybe what that looks like?
Of what I'm sorry?
What Dr. McComas is describing, like if someone moved to Georgia, and you, that position's posted?
I can give you four specific ones where they not have to be replaced.
Okay.
I will say that KAR says that the district shall, it's not May, provides final staffing allocations to site base by May 1st. Doesn't have a penalty in there if that's not done, but that is mandatory language in the KAR. I've got the regulation if we want to look at it.
I don't know, I knew that was the case back in January.
Tough spot, guys. What do you, any more discussion?
I don't even know what to say at this point. You got anything?
I agree that I feel like there have been a lot of, a lot of cuts. I feel like I'm on, we're all pretty much on the same page. I just am trying to figure out if it's better to recall all of them and then get to the May 10th meeting and be like, oh, well, you know, looks like we don't need 10 of them. And then, you know, there's been a lot of uncertainty and a lot of, you know, chaos over the past couple of years. And I feel like we are trying to do right by teachers and students. And I would rather not jerk anybody around anymore.
I think if we go that way, we need to make sure that's set up front, that we're going to be revisiting this, but...
It just sends a message once you approve it.
I think we'll lose them. I think they'll be gone. They'll be applying elsewhere because people are looking so...
No, I mean, it's a tough spot and time and timeline, and it's hard.
I don't agree with cutting, cutting this, cutting them at this time. I think we're all in that arena.
So that should make it easier. You have two no's.
Make a motion, guys.
I'll make it easier on you right there.
We'll make it really easy and make a motion.
Thank you.
The board will make a motion to, we make a motion not to approve the initial cuts?
Can I throw something out just real quick? What if, and this is just a thought, if we could move up the work session and try really hard for these people to look at this so that we're not on the yo-yo?
Till when?
But if you want to move it up.
Till sweet.
We're going to need, we're going to need the time.
Right, I understand. How much time do you think?
Well, May 10th would be good.
Okay.
I mean, the May 10th would give us ample time to go back and revisit where we're at. Because what I'm hearing is that you are going to want, I wrote it down already.
But this is due to May 1st. I mean, KRS says it has to be approved by May 1st.
You would need 24 hours notice for a special meeting. So that would be Thursday or Friday essentially.
Would that not almost constitute as an emergency meeting now?
Possibly.
No, and your policy allows for emergency meetings with notice.
But that doesn't give you time.
But we're not going to have any time to do this. So what I'm hearing you all want to do, that I don't necessarily agree with, but what I'm hearing you all want to do is revoke the staffing allocation back to the original allocation by recalling all letters. That's, that's what, that's what you're saying. That goes to them by May 1st. By May 10th, we can revisit. I don't think we can cut. Can I ask a superintendent that's here?
I can't hear very well what you're all saying.
Do you mind coming up here, Ms. Baker? I'm sorry. The original allocations, if we go back to our original allocations and we make adjustments by May 10th that may be what we have right now, or it might be a little heavier back to where we were, are we able to send that, we're able to send those back to our site base councils, right?
We have time, because you have till the 15th.
Okay, so that was accurate. I just want to make sure I was...
I do agree though with, you know, it's like you pull the band-aid off. Are we going to do that twice? And you get them and think their job's okay, and then you're going to go back and...
It's tough.
No, it's a horrible situation right now.
Well, the question is, do we have enough ESAR funds to support the staffing allocation for another year? That's the question that...
Needs to be answered.
That needs to be answered. If we do, makes sense to me, leave it alone for another year. That's, and I know that, I don't mean to butt you on the spot because I know you just got back, so... But I think that's the question that, for me, I need to know.
I do not have any...
And listen, I'm so sorry because the, you know, I hate the days of like running around and like whatever. But if you, if we could take a 10-minute recess or something, and that's something that you feel comfortable with, going to look for and seeing if you can...
I do not think it's wise to ask our finance director to go look in 10 minutes to make a decision of this magnitude when this is the work that we've been going on for the last three and a half months. If you want us to take the time to come back on the 10th and give you a new staffing that's heavier, we can do that. If you want to recall it all the way back to what it was, and then we, we take the letters back, and then we have to issue different letters, that's your decision. If, all of this is your decision. But I don't think it's, it's fair or appropriate to ask Ms. Ellis to go look at...
I'm, yeah, and it's, again, I don't think it's a number we're going to hold your, anybody's feet to the fire over. Just if somebody had like a general idea about, there's like about $2 million or whatever.
I just know from experience in my tenure here, historically, when I have to run out and come back, there are times you all have gotten inaccurate information. And that, I have a hard time living with that. And it's hard, it's hard to bring that to you when there's not accurate information. And it's found out after the fact when we go back and we actually do sit down and look at it and we realize, oh, we presented the board with inaccurate information, and therefore you all made a decision on inaccurate information. I'm not comfortable with that.
And I appreciate you being upfront, and I hope that you've noticed that we've really tried to...
Oh, and I do, and I appreciate that.
To honor that. And I just didn't know if there was like, just, you know, a floating around ESAR budget that we approximately have like X amount of dollars left or something. That was it.
And there's a domino effect then to that. So whatever is in the ESAR budget for other projects, like the ones that we just approved for Mr. Stump, then we have to then decide where that money is. We're going to have to, we're going to trade for Peter to pay Paul. We're going to, we're going to have to make adjustments there. And so I don't want you all to hear that I'm not in agreement with you wanting us to look further into this. I just don't feel like doing it hastily and then not being able to vet the ESAR budget on what other changes are going to need to be made is really in our best interest. uh, and then not being able to vet the ESSR budget on what other changes are gonna need to be made is really in our best interest.
Question, it's my understanding section seven allocations are not due till May thirtieth, what are section seven, are those in there or not?
Section seven is on the back category. I'm sorry, is it on the back category, no, it's on the, the additional school allocated, no, that's your sec- section seven is not in here.
Okay, so it's not, it's not.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we don't have that one on there.
So, we didn't provide anything in section seven as of now, so there's no, nothing listed that's considered section seven, but. That's typically done on a needs assessment, asking for specific things that the school is requesting, is my understanding, I mean.
I just knew that deadline was in this K A R, K A R, and I didn't know if it would help make the situation easier. Could we, I, I'm just throwing out different scenarios, um, could we approve this? Have Dr. Parrish and Dr. McComas send out an email that is ran by, you know, like, we approve, that says, this is what we're looking at. And this is, this is what we hope to do. We just didn't have the time to.
I will not be sending that email out. I'm not gonna tell staff that we did not have the time, now if you wanna direct Dr. Parrish to send that email out. But I don't feel like that's appropriate.
I'm just trying to figure out a situation, what's the least worst for everybody, um.
I think anyone who is here tonight, or watches the recording, they're gonna see your all's intent loud and clear. And they're gonna know your heart is to make sure that the district is covered. And I appreciate the work session was that impactful. I feel like it would be in our best interest to move forward with this plan, and that I can bring you back other things that we can discuss on the tenth. And that's the same process that we have used when principals were able to go through and vet their own ESSR dollars, because that's where these adjustments on these boxes came from. So they have already been recalling staff, bringing them in, letting them know that their, their position is safe, that they're recalling it due to, you know, whatever category, and we will have another layer of that.
Any additional discussion?
No, not for me, I mean, I don't know what else to say.
Any other suggestions, or would somebody like to make a motion, because I feel like we've pretty much tapped this out.
I'll make a motion to recall the staffing allocation reductions.
Back to the original?
Back to the original.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. Thank you. Number eighteen, authorized payment of salaries and accounts payable, Ms. Ellis.
Are there any questions in what was presented in those items?
I'm sorry.
Are, were there any questions, I mean, that's just a standard approval of our payments.
No, I ju- I just couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I make a motion to approve authorized payments to salaries and accounts payable.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, internal board business.
No, you're on superintendent's report.
Sorry, got flipped around. Now, internal board business, thank you, Ms. Ellis, um, superintendent.
Congratulations, by the way.
Superintendent's reports, um, number nineteen, superintendent's report, to superintendent.
Um, there's some items in there, just to make sure you're all aware of, uh, field trips, I heard about, um, at the work sessions, how field trips were really uh, powerful for students to have shared experiences. We don't typically report to you all the day-to-day internal, you know, local field trips. So Ms. Nance, um, got those for you, I just wanted you to kinda see the things that her plan or have been going on. Um, wanted to ask if you all wanna do a team-building retreat, um, this summer, so I'll start working on designing a day to maybe two days where we can do a superintendent, uh, slash board team retreat. Think that would help with relationships and making sure that we're all on the same page with things. Is there any discussion you all wanna have around that?
What, what do you mean a retreat?
Uh, like a, it would have to be called a work session, but it would be an opportunity for us to really learn more about.
The office, or?
No, I mean, I could plan it anywhere, I can, I can have it here, be kinda boring, I could try to liven it up like we did the other night. Or we could, uh, go somewhere and have a retreat during the day, and I could have, um, different consultants come in and work with us to do things, uh, or not, I mean, it's, it's completely up to you all, on what you, on you, what you wanna do. I didn't put a whole lot of planning into it yet, because I wasn't quite sure if it was something that you would be interested in or not.
Uh, well, it's funny, 'cause when you sent that email, I had this dream that night of us.
Caping?
Yes, I did. And zip-walined, and I'm like, what did she talk about, retreat?
A hard no for me.
Yeah. She had us sitting around the campfire.
Count me out.
Yeah.
Consider us all connected.
Yeah, I don't like bugs, so.
Just an idea.
No, that was, that's why I was like, I, I need more explanation on this.
Sorry, now I am interested in that.
Uh, July, or July dates, good?
You wanna set something?
If, if you wanna give me some dates, I will go ahead, I'm gonna first look at Ms. Fithin and Ms. Baumfield to make sure I don't mess up and do it over our PD Academy, 'cause that's what they're worried about. What are?
July eighteenth through the twenty-first.
Okay, we can't do it through the eighteenth or the twenty-first.
I can't do that week of July.
Neither.
Okay.
August first.
Okay, so any other week in July, except for the first week of July?
I can't do the first week either, but I can do the first full week.
Second. Eleventh through the twenty-fifth. Or the eleventh, that week, that eleventh. Or the week of the twenty-fifth, or you could do the, I'm sorry, I can't do the eighteenth through the twenty-first, because we have the Cardinal Academy going on.
It's my birthday, it's a weekend holiday, we can't, we gotta sell.
Do you wanna do that second week of, um, second week of July?
That works for me.
That's, yeah.
Whoop, sorry.
Okay, just make sure I'm straight on it, so the eleventh through the fifteenth. Um, do you wanna do a one day or a two day, and it doesn't have to be like overnight two days, it could be, you know, just two, two days, where we can try to have some activities, team-building activities, we can have some, uh, and I can also probably have it connected to your old's training hours, so that whatever you do can be connected to training hours, if you're interested in that.
Very interesting.
Okay. So, one day or two days, or do you want me to just get some things together and then bring, bring it back to you? Is that okay, but we know we're gonna do the eleventh through the fifteenth, all right. Okay, um, the Cardinal newsletter from our base team is, uh, in your packet, um, that has a little tab on it. And then you also have some updates from, uh, Ms. Bush, she did a virtual survey, uh, surprisingly, we don't have a lot of, we had like thirty-four, um, students that were interested in, in the virtual survey from the, uh, from the homeschool update. Do you have anything that you wanna add to that, Ms. Bush? Do you mind coming up here so you can talk a little louder, this is starting to run a little bit, I'm sorry.
The items that we've already started to try to get back our homeschool families, um, we've sent a letter, obviously, with the virtual survey. We've also done a postcard that we sent out in December, and we would like any other ideas that you might hear about that would be, um, something that we could use to try to get our babies back. We are planning on doing some signage around town in July, to try to get that buzz talking about coming back to all the good things in Clark County. And any other ideas that you have for the homeschool, I don't wanna say PR, because that's not really a good statement.
She's doing a good job at it, too.
But, uh, anything to just get, you know, some buzz talking and showing them all the wonderful things we're doing. We're not gonna get all of them back, but if we were to get two hundred and twenty-five, I would be just, you know, happy as can be.
Do we know who they are, I mean?
Yes, we have to keep them for the state, we have every name.
So could we invite them, uh, I mean, could we utilize, maybe, um, well, I'm just throwing out, maybe the football field and have different, have the different schools there as representative, have a cookout, do something for the families, just say, hey, come back, let's talk to you, we'd love to have you back. Or, I don't know, just.
No, I mean, these are all good ideas, she's actually trying to work with, um, you wanna talk about how you're gonna do the, um, B C T C?
The traditional ready fest.
Whatever it's called.
We're changing that to a community event, we are showcasing every single school, it is still July the night, I'm sorry, the twenty-ninth, and it's still gonna piggyback with his traditional movie night, and we're gonna have every school represented, from the health department, all the tri- typical vendors that he has. So we could send invitations to them to come and visit each school for that, that's a very good idea.
Is that gonna be at the B C T C, just like it was before?
This summer.
January, I said January, July the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
So we could, that's a great idea. If we wait too late, um, you know, for football season and stuff like that.
No, I wasn't talking about waiting for football, I'm talking about just doing it, open, open the stadium up, but if you already have an event planned, that makes more sense, so.
Okay, anything else, Ms. Bush?
Um, just the survey results that you can see whenever you have time about virtual, and, um, we hope a lot of those students will come back in person as well.
Our virtual is down, and our, we were, we were thinking more students would be interested in virtual, and that number was, I think, thirty-fourth, um, out of the ones that answered the survey, so we were surprised that it was that low, but we are gonna keep asking, um, about that information. Uh, capstone, I am required to do, uh, as you see Superintendent Baker here tonight, I'm required to do a capstone, um, for June, so I put that in one of your email updates, um, so I hate to do work session, work session, work session. Um, but it would be nice if in June we did a work session for my evaluation of my capstone, um, if you wanna do that separately, if you wanna do it connected to, um, connected to the board meeting, we could, but maybe we do like a five-thirty to six-thirty, um, you know, the hour before, so that we can do it, if you don't wanna do a separate day in June.
Is Jean's agenda historically?
It's usually lighter, just 'cause it's June, um, but if you wanna, if you wanna, if you wanna do that, or if you wanna leave it at six-thirty and then have a s- a special meeting afterward, you know, it's like, where do you want it at, and I know Mr. Toby's work schedule might be more difficult, but I don't know if you wanna do like a five or a five-thirty work session before.
I know about it.
Yeah, or if you wanna leave it at six-thirty, and just know that that's gonna probably, um, go longer, even though it's a shorter.
I'd rather come in earlier, honestly. And then let, and leave before.
Instead of doing a separate?
Yeah.
Separate night?
I mean, does that work, I mean, 'cause we're gonna have a, what day?
It would, yeah, I think it's the twenty-sixth.
At like five, um, to get the, the work session for her capstone over with, because Jean's kind of like, it's lighter meeting.
Mr. Toby, are you able to do five, or is five-thirty better?
Five's fine.
Okay, so we'll say five to six-thirty for the, um, special call meeting, rather than a work session, and then the regular meeting at six-thirty, okay? Um, and I won't, I won't go over a lot on the, uh, board, on my board report, which I gave you a copy of. Strategic planning, I'm gonna actually turn it over to Warren, 'cause I want you to hear about the student perspective, uh, we had sixteen different groups, two hundred and seven participants, uh, during our focus groups, three of those groups, uh, were R D C, G R C, and Baker individually. And then we had one interesting, uh, Zoom collection of students from all four elementary schools that I got to do with, and, uh, Warren said in, on all of those, it was really enlightening, so you wanna do highlights?
Yes, thank you, uh, so Dr. Wanda Creel from Huron Consulting Group, did I pronounce that right? Okay, um, she kinda led us that day, she was, uh, she asked all the groups of students, uh, three things. What the district was doing good, uh, was the first thing, and then everybody shared, and something I wanna point out that I loved was that every group, even the littler kids, and up to the, my school, the older kids, everybody was passionate, and everybody was sharing stuff. Um, the second thing was what our district could do better, and it's easy to point out a problem, like something someone can do better. But then the third thing is we circled back to that, and we focused on how we could improve moving forward, um, and they're gonna use that and put it into our strategic growth plan, don't say that right, do I? And I think that's over the next three years, so, um, it was really refreshing to know that everybody is, or all the students are passionate and involved, and, um, they care. I was real, oh, also, I wanted to shout out, she left earlier, but Dr. Lindsay Hale, she took good notes, and she was really attentive.
And it was just a really respectful process for everyone, um, no one's gonna know outside of Dr. Hale, and she knows that I don't wanna know, and that I don't want anyone else knowing, and we talked to the groups that, you know, when you all leave and they ask if your go-back and your colleagues say, how did it go? We just want you to say, well, in our secondary group, we talked about, some of these things were mentioned, we would never want it to come back and say, well, Warren Harris said. So we wanted to really try to protect that space, and hopefully we're respecting that, uh, people can honor confidentiality and make sure that they, uh, can appreciate that process. So it was, it was really nice, a lot of, I've gotten the preliminary report back, and I did a debrief with, uh, Dr. Creel Sunday morning. So I will be working on, uh, my version of the things that are, uh, start bubbling up, you look at the, the, what are common themes throughout the sixteen different focus groups, and then she and her team also do the same thing, so then we calibrate. So did I see the same things that the analysis team, that, that they use, see, and then we're able to have, uh, some really vulnerable discussion. She, uh, will be setting up one-on-one meetings with each of you, so that your voice is, um, individually heard in the folk, in the focus groups, and so, um, she'll be reaching out to you, I'll make sure she's, you're copied in on the email when she starts to do that. Um, we did a roundtable, uh, Dr. Baum, I'm sorry, Ms. Baumfield and Ms. Fithin, uh, she's told me she's wanting to work on one, I was like, oh my gosh. Uh, they, uh, did a roundtable with Mr. Chanacki with our, uh, we probably had about fifteen different community members that also attended the roundtable group, um, around profile of a graduate, and what we expect to see, uh, the experience from a preschool student all the way up to a high school student to look like. Ironically, nobody talked about math and reading, nobody talked about, uh, standards, nobody talked about all these things. They talked about soft skills, they talked about having to look somebody in the eye, how to keep your word, how to, um, have integrity in the workplace, how to, um, write an email and not put everything in the subject line, I mean, they gave you some really specific, specific examples. Um, and it was, it was just a, a really nice opportunity to sit and connect intentionally, you know, I feel like I'm intentionally connecting with, you know, with community, but it wasn't, like, we have specific questions that we were asking, so that was really nice, expanding opportunities, you already saw the MSU, which is standard, but we're also expanding what we're offering through MSU. B C T C, we're starting an associate track for students, so we gotta start small, capacity's gotta grow, we have, uh, fif- enough spots for fifteen to thirty students that won't really stay on G R C's campus, they will be at B C T C, and when they graduate high school, they should graduate with an associate's degree as well. And so those are programs that we wanna expand even with MSU, uh, but B C T C is our partner for that. Uh, A T C is starting a flambeautomy course, that they will also get certifications in, and that is, um, also going to be affiliated with the work that we're doing with B C T C. You already heard about Cardinal Lean, um, really excited about the instructional framework that was created, I time focus stayed about the same. Uh, five-star meeting, we actually spent a lot of time talking about the work session and how we wanted that to look like, and how do they needed to make sure that their staff was prepared, and what were their talking points, and so that's what our five-star, which is our principal meeting, our five-star meeting covered. And then I've been finishing, um, and still finishing principal and director evaluations, um, standard three, superintendent attended events for cultural leadership, I'd like to point out that I went to the, um, a among many things, but I went to the Veterans Council. Um, passionate group of, um, men and women, older men and women, that really want a Vietnam and Korean War memorial. Um, they have approached us, um, I've asked Ms. McCoy to look at things, uh, for us from the standpoint of can they put a memorial on school property? And this is a pretty elaborate memorial. It's about a fifth of an acre. Um, and they are desperate to get this going somewhere. So they have a lot of discussion at the Veterans Council, if they want it in town, or if they want it on school property, and so, uh, we are trying to work through that with them. Like, is it an option that you could have something that wonderful on school property? But then it's like, does it get leased? Who's the maintenance? Who's our planning and zoning? So what's the liability? What's the insurance? Where people are gonna park? Are they gonna access? I mean, there, we have tons of questions we're working through, but it was probably one of the sweetest moments I've really got to participate in in Clark County, to see, um, these men and women that are really excited about something. So I shared about a traveling memorial that might help them create, uh, energy and excitement around this memorial, because they're trying to get private funds. You know, they're, they're, they're trying to build donations for this. Um, so we talked about possibly starting their own Facebook account or Twitter account. They do a contest possibly where local artisans, where students can build and design, uh, an actual memorial that can travel to all the schools, can travel to businesses, could actually, like, I'm gonna donate a thousand dollars and I want it to stay at my site for a month. And so then you could take pictures of the memorial. I'm not sure what's gonna come out of it, but I was just really excited to be a part of that meeting with them. Um, standard four, uh, human resource, uh, again, working on that international teacher recruiting. Um, again, math and sciences, our principal group talked about that too. The alternate route for certification, I said on the KDE Superintendent Task Force, we got that approved, uh, which was really exciting, because that impacted the work that CKEC gets to do around option seven. I've also started working with, uh, EKU and, uh, creating a grow-your-own, um, program here, uh, next year for leadership tracks, um, and I'll probably also start teaching for them as well in one of them, uh, based on the conversations that we're having. Construction meetings for standard five, um, Ross Tarrant, and I think you all kind of saw the product of that work, consolidated monitoring. Um, summary is there. We had just started at day one at the last meeting, so that is wrapped up. We've had exit interviews, waiting on final reports. Collaborative leadership. Um, this interactive work session, I thought was probably the highlight of, uh, really, uh, large part of the year. I thought it demonstrated a lot of effort from, um, staff, teachers, principals, counselors, frisk, uh, base team, you know, giving up their time and, and you all appreciating the conversations that you got to have. Um, that really meant a lot to them, meant a lot to me as well. And then standard seven, um, I just spent a lot of time last month on, uh, work around the opposing the charter bill. Um, the charter school bill with KESA, so that's what I put under, um, standard seven. And I don't have anything else unless you have questions.
Did you get any feedback from our legislators on, on, on that at all? On why they voted the way they did?
Uh, on the second, no. I did in-between votes, but I didn't get any follow-up after the final vote.
Any more questions?
Thank you. You're welcome. And then just a reminder, when consent items, pull it out. Uh, well, you don't have to pull it out. If you approve it, just say with reimbursement on item twenty-six.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, any questions about consent items?
No.
I'll make a motion to, um, approve consent items with, um, reimbursement added to twenty-six.
I'll second. Or did you say something?
No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, um, four zero. Um.
Am I taking another bathroom break?
Um, um, do I have a motion to go in a closed session?
Make that motion.
I'll second. Alls in favor? Motion carries four zero. We're in closed session at ten nineteen. Thank you, guys.